Ready to go right through that.
Yes.
Okay, so.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. I would like to open the 25th of July City Workshop. And our first order of business is we need a motion for Mr. Alberg, please.
I move to allow Councilmember Alberg to participate via telephone.
Second. We have a motion and a second to allow Mr. Alberg to participate by phone. Allos in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. Next order of business, employee recognition. Don Bear, Fire Captain, 15 years.
Thanks Mayor Protem.
Thank you Chief, I appreciate it.
Don, come on up. So, I was always curious how Don got into the fire service. So I did some checking, and I found out that Don was born at a very young age to Mama Bear and Papa Bear. And his siblings were Grizzly Bear and Ted E Bear. And he decided not to get into the family business, but he wanted to follow in his hero's footsteps, which of course would be Smokey Bear. And that's how Don got into the fire service. I think I'm pretty close on that. I think, from what I found out, yeah. We did steal Don 15 years ago, and I say steal because we did, from Moses Lake. I was at a conference not too long ago, and they are still upset with the City of Oak Harbor that we took Don away from them. But Don has been with us for 15 years. He's a firefighter one and two, certified internationally. He's a fire instructor one and two, international certification. He's an officer one. He's a fire inspector with the International Code Council. He's one of our certified fire investigators. He's our CPR instructor, our first aid instructor. And I hate to say this, but he's really a heck of a nice guy, too. When Don comes to work, he's always very positive, brings a good attitude to work. He's the type of person that you ask him to do something, and the best thing to do is say, "Can you?" And just walk away. It's really the best thing. And then Don gets it done. It's a pleasure having him there with us. He's just a heck of a good employee, and just a pleasure to be in the department. And he's also our fish slayer. We take him fishing with us, and he catches six and everybody else catches none. And this is true because we did this a couple of years ago. So, with 15 years, it's my pleasure to give you a fleece that I want you to wear today on this nice holiday encore. And there you go. It's your opportunity to spout any words of wisdom that you may have.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to work here for the City of Oak Harbor. It's been an absolute privilege for the 15 years that I've been here. And the big thing that's made it what it is is the folks that I get to work with every day. These are the folks that make it fun. So, and they say, you know, time flies when you're having fun. It sure has. Thank you everybody, I appreciate it.
Short question for Mrs. Sparza. The next items are action. Do we need to make any special other announcements for that? Is this gonna... Okay. All right, we will move into it. Finance. Funding options for Windjammer Park Pavilion and West Kitchen. Lee, we have Ms. Patricia Song, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I did a PowerPoint because I love PowerPoints. You know, I just wanted to talk through some things. So, I was given the request to look at how we could fund the Pavilion and West Kitchen. And I went through a process. So, Windjammer Park GMP 13 was passed on April 17th of 2018 or approved for hardscape, landscape, electrical, landscape maintenance, and splash park. The approved total cost of the GMP was broke out below. The clean water facility, specific costs that go around the building and have to do with the clean water facility was $6,345,149. The clean water facility funding for the park improvements, that was the mitigation required pieces that are being done, was $6,485,578. General fund and special revenue funds for the park improvements were secured in the amount of $2,762,614, for a total of $15,593,342. Council decided to remove the pavilion structure in the West Kitchen from the park improvements unless the .09 grant funds were obtained. Island County met, reviewed our grant application, and did not select the park, pavilion, or the West Kitchen as one of their funded grants. So the mayor asked me to take a look deeper into our funding possibilities to fund those improvements. The cost of the two additional improvements, Pavilion is $698,820. The West Kitchen is $1,168,904. And that's including the taxes and all the other things. For a total of $1,867,724. If it was, if council chooses to approve it today, there has been an escalation cause, clause, or escalation cost added of $36,234 to the cost. This cost can be adjusted through the contingency for the project. The result is less money would be returned to the project from contingency due to this added cost. That, it was added due to increased supply cost, those kind of things. The funding possibilities that I identified were the stability fund. We have $3,089,000 in it. REIT 1 has $2,681,479. REIT 2 has $2,083,099. And the park impact fees have $190,000 sitting in them. My recommended funding would be using REIT 1 and REIT 2. I want to go over the real estate funding tax because it's a little, it was a little confusing, and they've made, they made changes in 2015, which made us a little cautious initially. My staff person, Jessica, and I went back and forth with MRSC and the State Auditor's Office to kind of narrow this down, and this is a result of all those conversations. So REIT 1 is first, the first quarter percent from RCW 8246010. And it authorizes us to levy .25 REIT tax on all sales of real estate. REIT 2, the second quarter percent under 8246035, authorizes cities to, cities planning under the Growth Management Act to levy a second .25 percent. The use of REIT 1 and 2 funds must be used primarily on capital projects that are listed in the capital facilities plan of the overall comprehensive plan. City of Oak Harbor, it equals the projects listed in our capital improvement plan, the comprehensive plan, the section that's the financial part. Capital project defined, that was our step one. REIT 1, you can use it for planning, acquisition, construction, reconstruction, repair, replacement, rehab, or improvements of streets, parks, and recreational facilities. REIT 2, you can include projects that include planning, acquisition, construction, reconstruction, repair, replacement, rehabilitation, or improvement of streets, roads, highways, sidewalks, street and road lighting systems, traffic signals, bridges, domestic water systems, storm and sanitary sewer systems, planning and, planning, construction, repair, and rehabilitation, or of improvements of parks. So the improvement portion of the parks, not the land purchases. So, and the difference is, REIT 2 is way more strict than REIT 1. REIT 2 cannot be used for the acquisition of park lands. It cannot be used for planning, construction, or any of those things for recreational facilities. But REIT 2 may be used for projects that qualify as an allowed REIT 1 project under limited circumstances. And that's where we were getting confused. The limited circumstances was added in 2015, and that limited circumstance limits you to the greater of 100,000 or 25% of available funds. And so that's what we first identified as available for the, the park. It does also come with, if you use this limited circumstances, a written report with specific criteria, and it has to be adopted as part of the city's regular budget process, which we hadn't done. So, if we were going to use it for limited circumstances, we were only going to get just a small amount, which is what we identified as part of our funding for the park improvements, that 2 million. But then, we looked, and when we talked to MRSC, the State Auditor's Office, they interpreted Windjammer Park as a limited circumstances. It's not. We continued looking, and the use of REIT funds is a, a loud capital project as an improvement of parks for both REIT 1 and REIT 2 with no maximum spending cap. The only limitation is that REIT cannot be the sole source of funds, which it wouldn't be. So, per our conversation, the West Kitchen may be considered a recreational facility. It is not allowed for REIT 2, but it is allowed for REIT 1. Therefore, the kitchen could be funded for the full $1,168,904. The Pavilion is considered a park improvement. It's not an enclosed structure. It enhances the park, so they're not considered a recreational facility like you would a kitchen or something that closes up and doesn't, and only has one limited use. So REIT 2 could be used for that, for the $6,988,820. So I took a look at REIT 1.
Aye.
Our 2017 ending balance was $2,281. I added in our estimated revenue of about $400,000 this year, so it brings our total of REIT up to $2,681. We budgeted 175 use of REIT 1. 87.5 was for the park, another 87.5 was for four streets. We also added that 125.25 when we were first looking at the Windjammer Park improvements. And if we add in the Pavilion to REIT 1, we still end up with an ending balance of $1,217,050. REIT 2 did the same thing, and you get to the bottom, and we're at $1,107,844. We feel that going forward for REIT, it needs to be part of our CIP process, part of our budget, especially if we're looking at developing more park lands for ball fields or things like that. REIT 1 could be used to purchase the land or help, part of the purchase money for the land, and REIT 2 could be used for part of the cost for the improvements of the parks. It also can be used for streets as we talked about. So, that was pretty quick, I know. Any questions?
At this time, I would like to ask if there's any public comment about this agenda item. Someone would like to speak, just give the name and stuff up to the line. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Hal Hovey. I'm a resident of Oak Harbor. I think all the city council members and the mayor received some comments from me in email. I'd like to repeat those and, and go into a little bit more detail now. You know, I'm a realtor and I help folks buy homes all the time. I have opportunity to work with some great home builders. And one of the things that the home builders always tell folks when they're getting ready to build a house is, okay, this is a basic house. This doesn't include the upgrades, you know? And I've had home builders who tell me that the cost of upgrades can be up to 50% of the base price of the house. The nice thing when you're building a house is you always have a Plan B and a Plan C. If you don't want the granite countertops and the hardwood floors and the crystal chandeliers, you can remove them and back off and go to a Plan B that doesn't have that. Instead of spending 50% over the cost of the house, or 30% over, or 20% over the basic cost, you can end up with just a basic house. Happens all the time. I feel like with the park, we keep being given options that don't include a Plan B and a Plan C. You know, I understand that the design plans are the design plans and that the bids were done according to the plans, and that's great. I respect that. But are there Plan Bs and Plan Cs? Instead of the buildings that were in the plans, can we go with something that's not quite so fancy and maybe not spend $1.2 million on the kitchen and $700,000 on the Pavilion? The other aspect of this is that, you know, the Windjammer Park Integration Plan, which I was a part of, was broken into five phases. The plan as it's being implemented is not. Elements of four of the five phases were all brought in to this one plan that is currently under construction. And I understand the reasons for that. It makes sense. You know, there's infrastructure that has to be done. But the Pavilion was not in any of the five phases. There was a space for a Pavilion. There was not a Pavilion. And I'm all for having a Pavilion. I'm just not for having a $700,000 one. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to give comment at this time? Anyone else? All right, I'll look to council. I would like to ask Rick Alberg to give comment because it's harder with that delay for him to answer things. So, Councilman Alberg, would you like to give comment about this funding that we have found, please?
Yes. I have some questions here and a, and then a comment. First of all, my first question for staff is, does the A&E contract, that's Architect Engineer Contract, for the addition of the West Kitchen and Pavilion include support services at this time? What is the answer?
Yes.
I couldn't hear the answer.
Yes.
Who said yes?
This is Brett. Brett, excuse me, Brett Arvinson.
Thanks Brett. So, you're telling me that there will not be any increase to the park slash Windjammer Park for A&E support services as a result of adding the West Kitchen and the Pavilion? Is that correct?
That's correct. Our original contract with Crowell and subcontractors included construction management services that anticipated building the Pavilion and the kitchen, the West Kitchen.
Okay. Thank you Brett. And then I have a comment, two comments on this. The first comment is, the original bids for the, all the other facilities, including the East Kitchen, were all publicly advertised and publicly bid for Oak, and we received multiple bids on this. And subsequently, we contracted for that work. And Brett, that is correct? Is that the right answer?
Yes, that is correct. They were bid, they were bid as separate bid packages so we could save them, but they were competitively advertised and opened in sealed bid fashion.
And that, that was in GMP, for GMP number 13, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then my final comment on this, so that you can move on here, in my opinion, the changes to the design now, to bid those independently and redesign will probably, and I have to emphasize probably, not result in any lower cost to the project because construction costs are continuing to go up. We know that. And that means we have to start over on the redesign. I, I don't see where we're really going to benefit significantly versus delaying this thing and trying to scramble our way through another series of construction seasons and disruptions to the park. Therefore, I'm going to support us moving forward with the kitchen and the Pavilion. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Roger and Al for a moment. Stay on tune for a vote. All right, I just opened up for other council members. Councilman Lawson, please.
Yes. I, I have to say that I'm really excited about the park. I've been down a few times with my kids in the hot weather to visit the lagoon and kind of been scanning and watching. It looks really sharp. The buildings look sharp from, from the waterside. So I'm, I am super excited. Can you give, just, just as a basic question, just to give the public maybe something to look forward to or something to wrap their brains around, what are the size of these kitchens and what, what is the size of this Pavilion? I know it's been a while since we've seen pictures and...
I actually brought some pictures.
Did you? Okay, yeah, that would be great. I just, just to, I, the scale of this, and we talk about this, these being expensive, but in today's time, I mean, these, I'm assuming this is going to be a kitchen that's gonna...
It's designed to be...
Industrial, withhold hundreds of people walking in it and using it a year?
We, the analogy we used on this is what you would expect in a national park. We designed something that is able to last, low maintenance. It is a maritime environment, so a lot of the materials that you could normally use can't, can't be used down there with the wind and the salt and all that kind of stuff. So, here's our site plan, and the Pavilion is, make sure I'm pushing, pushing the right button here.
There you go.
The Pavilion is right here, the kitchen's right here. The Pavilion has a large, this actually, this looks small and drawn, but this is actually four acres in front of it, of grassed area. I actually took some pictures this morning. We didn't have any current pictures. These are the pictures we used last summer. That is an awning. That awning is 23 by about 63. It's about 1,700 square feet. It's designed to cover people if we want to ban or we want to do a wedding up there. You'd have an area to stand, so you could probably stand 30 or 40 people under it. Again, it has the large grassed areas and actually a terrace area in front of it that's, I grabbed a bunch of, here's the two kitchens. This is the big one, so this is what the kitchen will look like. It is the same view with the stone frontage. They are very similar in construction to the clean water facility wood frame construction. That's, that's a wood finish, but it's actually a polyurethane finish, so it's designed for the environment. So, in terms of area, this kitchen is about 5,000 square foot. It's got enclosed area and an outside picnic area. It's, it does have electricity. It won't have stove or heating, but if you wanted to bring a catering system in, you could do that. And we did have a fireplace when I went open, but it's not there anymore. I think I saw pictures of the kitchens that I brought, so...
Thank you. Yeah, I, to me, my initial reaction is to support this. But before I, I do that, did we, in the past, have we, has past councils or past administrations earmarked this REIT money that we've been accumulating in these accounts for anything else that maybe I, that we don't know about, or has there been talk to?
I look backwards about four years, and we haven't really used it for anything. But we do have it in our CIP for streets, and we did put it in our CIP for Windjammer. Smaller amounts though, which is okay, but it wasn't truly utilizing it in my mind for what you're wanting to go forward with. If the goal is to have a completed park or the ball fields, this is a resource that we really haven't been paying attention to.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize for nothing. Anyone else? Council, restart.
Patricia, make sure I understand. Looks like about six years of REIT money?
Depending on how much we choose. We receive about 400, we, our revenue receipts have gone up. The last, in 2015, we received $316,000 for each fund. Last year, it was $450,000. So we're looking at what we've collected so far. We're right on target for about $400,000, probably more. So, every year goes up. So when you, when I looked out to 2023 and just use what we put in the CIP plan, REIT 1 would be at $1,008,000 and REIT 2 would be at about $1,008,200, $1,008,25, and $1,008,27, based on just what we currently have. Now that would go down if we chose to use it for ball field improvements or purchasing of land there.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Any other councilmen? Councilman S. Davis, please.
Thank you. The kitchen, Brett, is that a double kitchen? Would you host two groups there or is that just one?
Yes, that, the one on the west side is the double kitchen, and the one on the east side is the single.
Because I did receive some feedback. I did not vote for GMP 13 because I was concerned about the cost.
Yeah.
Just of what things cost. However, as a group, we decided to support that. So I've struggled over the weekend in thinking about this. It's like, well, you know, I'm, one of the, one of the thoughts or one of the comments that was made to me is have kitchens changed? Do we need that big of a, an area? Would we be better off with some smaller, like we have at Fort Nougent, I don't know what you would call those, but a couple of smaller, what do we call those, those little...
Picnic shelters.
Picnic shelters with a, a, you know, some barbecues or something like that versus a 5,000 square foot kitchen? I don't, I don't know that you can answer that. It was just a comment that made me think.
Yeah, you know, when we look at these facilities, you know, while we were talking about kitchens, we also wanted to have places that people could get out of the weather. And our park really doesn't have that. We have some at Fort Nougent. But the old kitchens, yeah, you could go inside. And part of the conversation was, you know, you may not be using a kitchen, but you could have another event there or a party or something like that. So, we felt this arrangement was more multitasking and more multi-use. So we, while we call them kitchens, they are places where people can gather if you wanted to have a service or something like that. So, it was intended more to, to give people a place to congregate.
And the next question is we, so in the kitchen, I go back and forth. I'm leaning towards supporting the action the council took because we made that decision to try and, before we follow this. The Pavilion, to me, is fairly important because we keep talking about wanting to... Um, the pavilion to me is fairly important because we keep talking about wanting to have large venues eventually, probably the Music Fest in the park. Is, my recollection in all the charrettes and things that we went to was there was going to be at the end of the plaza and I don't know what we call that. Is it the esplanade or what you got it labeled?
The promenade, yeah.
The promenade where all that comes together where there could be booths and a farmer's market. That that was going to be more of a main stage area facing out? Do the staff has a comment? Which one of those might be a main?
I have, I have actually have a picture of the original master plan and we can kind of talk through that. I just grabbed stuff from, from our past history. So we, well, as we went through the integration plan, uh, we had, looked at this as sort of a two-sided stage show if we ever wanted to music. So we had the amphitheater here and the pavilion was intended to be a small amphitheater on the site. So the original concept was this could be used for concerts, big concerts, small concerts.
A lot of...
The future phase, we would like to put in a, a bigger amphitheater here in the future. It was intended, as we walked through it with the Citizens Committee, to, to have it from both sides.
Okay. Well, you're making me happy because I do, I still like the berms and the amphitheater. So the thought is we can still, even with what we're doing, what we're calling the current Phase One...
Yeah.
In Section E, still get in a large stage area and possible...
Yes.
Sunken amphitheater or somehow berm up a hill that people would sit on.
Yeah, that's, that's the intention. Uh, that is where the windmill is.
Uh, that's coming up. Little foreshadowing, some seed planting. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Larson?
Thank you, Mayor Brotem. Um, there's a couple of things that people said that I, I do agree with and I do like. I like the pavilion. I like the idea of a larger one coming up. I've been looking over past actions, uh, of the council and how some of this came about. And, uh, I'm looking at our packet and it said, uh, basically on April seventeenth, the council removed the pavilion and the west kitchen from the approved activities unless Island County would fund them with point oh-nine grant funds. Island County did not fund our grant request. There were funding questions and concerns with all the escalating costs of everything that I've seen since I've been elected to this council. And this is no exception. So there were concerns. We pulled these because of those concerns and said, let's get some help funding this. That help didn't come, so now we're saying, eh, let's look at our own pocketbooks again. I look at the kitchens that we've had, the, I've talked to people about the utilization of those, that they seem to be underutilized. I don't know whether that would continue with these, but this seems like an awful lot of money for something that I don't know how well utilized it's going to be and for something that we were concerned about spending and escalating the spending on completing this project. And I, I still have those concerns. So even though we've been, um, looking at ways to fund this alternatively, um, it's still us funding this. So I have a hard time approving this for the kitchen. I like the pavilion. I think it will be utilized. I think we do need a larger one. I like that idea as well. Um, but one point two million dollars, we were concerned about that before and my concerns for that have dissipated with the fact that we've gotten creative in finding some funding for this. So, um, at this point, I can't support funding this kitchen. Thank you.
Um, and...
Counselor?
Yes, thank you. I, I too can see the concern with the large kitchen and, and costing as much as it does. Back when we did the, um, integration plan, do you remember, recall, because I wasn't at every meeting, I wasn't a, a member of the group, um, what the, the thinking was or, or the, obviously it had to have been a priority to have the two kitchens? Do you sort of remember what the group, what the public told us regarding the...
I think the, what came to with the kitchens was we had two kitchens already and there was a concern that we would take away something that's already there. And so as we moved forward with the kitchens, we had two kitchens because we already had two and we didn't want to take away something, you know? Hank probably addressed more how they're utilized, but they have been utilized in the past. So our, I think the, the thinking there was, yeah, we have two kitchens. We need to replace some or leave the ones that's there now. That's why we made that second kitchen optional or, you know, as, as one is, we made sure that, yeah, that was a decision that we have to make. We tried to delineate it so if we had to, you know, and I think, I think a comment was, yeah. And part of the discussion was, as we went into this Phase One, we knew we were pushing stuff that we showed as Phase One in this original design, but we said, let's, let's see what we can do. And actually, we, I think in terms of what we've been able to accomplish, it's a lot more than what we intended. But the kitchen decision was making sure that we didn't take something else that was people were used to.
Hank, can you, can you address sort of how they're used? How much they're used now? What, what are your opinions on...
Uh, sure. In fact, I just, an hour or two ago, looked at how many reservations we had in our kitchens in two thousand seventeen. And keep in mind, two thousand seventeen, our facilities were already, we had some power and water cut off at one of the kitchens, but we had two hundred and twenty-seven paid reservations on the kitchens in two thousand seventeen. There are additional reservations that took place that did not pay. Uh, a nonprofit, church groups, they don't necessarily pay. So they are extremely popular. And surprisingly also, um, they get utilized in the winter. An example is, is kind of a surprising usage, is we get a lot of baby showers in the kitchen. It's kind of odd, but I'm thinking, well, maybe you have families or young families that, uh, maybe live in an apartment and have nowhere else to have a party. So they go down and they have a kitchen they can reserve that's, that is still out of the weather.
And now, do you, um, do you, in your opinion, I mean, you've been running our parks for so long and these kitchens have been there...
Yeah.
As long as you have, right?
Longer.
Longer than you've been running them. Okay.
There's something older than me out there.
Yeah. Um, do you think that two kitchens is, I mean, is needed? Is something that would be used that the public, in your opinion, just watching them be used over the years, that, that the public would get use out of and reserve and...
I, I would say that they would be reserved completely every weekend.
And how much does it cost? And are we gonna keep that cost the same, you think? Do you guys have a plan for the new system to reserve the kitchens? Do you have any ideas?
We haven't thought that far ahead. We charge twenty-five dollars to reserve it.
For a day or an hour or...
And that's more of a convenience fee. Uh, it's, it's, years ago, we went first come, first served and we'd have people camped out the night before. So it was a service to the public that they had a means of reserving a kitchen.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I mean, if somebody else has a question for you, you don't have to go. That's all for now. Thank you.
Um, I have a few comments. Um, Brett, on the pavilion included, we are planning good electricity so that an amp's not gonna blow out, that we can have a huge concert, they can bring their blankets. So however many people we can shove in on four, four acres...
Yeah, we're running extra power circuit out there, so that will have, to me, it's whether it's two amps or one hundred amps and we haven't decided on that, but there will be power out. There's power out there right now.
And, and it's flat. It's not gonna be humpy-dumpy.
We'll make sure it's built in the wall.
Okay. So that we have an area for someone to be able to use that at that, that type of thing? Cause that would open up a lot. Um, on the kitchens, I have used the kitchens during the winter for Mr. and Mrs. Claus, for pitchers, for the end of sports things, and it's freezing cold and you want to be inside the kitchen. I think we are, have blinders on. We have so many people moving here and I know that Ms. Wossinger did some, um, investigating about what other people are spending on parks and they're about a fourth of ours and what they offer and we don't. We have a vision here to make a vision. This is the key of our city downtown, the park. We want it to be multi-use. So I don't want a kitchen that's just gonna be used in the summertime, but this, as he says, Hank, he could rent it probably every single weekend for parties or events. They have a way to go inside. It's built with material that, I'm sorry, the kitchens aren't now, that are going to last with the sea, the, the salt, the spray, the, the dumping of the rain. I mean, they're not gonna be flat roofs. I mean, they're putting a lot into this. This is not a thirty-year, twenty-five-year, whatever. This is lasting like our other fifty years. We need to have some vision. Don't, people are, to me, are getting hung up on a price of a kitchen. This is a multipurpose room that has a kitchen in it. It's not gonna have gas ranges and it's not gonna have the vent hood and, you know, it's not where a professional chef usually comes, but it's multi-use for a lot of things. And I think we're narrowing our scope if we don't add it. We have this on one side, the wastewater treatment plant will have one kitchen. And on this side, it just opens up opportunity. We're not getting smaller in our population. And if we want people to use this, we have to offer something down there. We have the money, yes, and it's not gonna cost our ratepayers anymore because it's REIT money. We were looking for money without having to go into our general fund and I think we accomplished that. And let me tell you, MRSC, they go everything with a fine-tooth comb. I just think it would be a shame to limit our scope. Um, this is a vision and something that, there will be people who complain. They complain like today is too hot, but this is something we can do for the future, not just our grandchildren, but the children after that. This is gonna be lasting fifty years or more. And I won't be around, but I sure hope. It's just a, a legacy of our park and it's been dumped on, not cared for, I mean, cared for within our means, but we just, we need to stretch a little bit. We need to be brave. We were brave when we built this plant. We're used to membrane. We didn't go back to the sludge. And when everybody else is having to redo their plants, we aren't going to have to. I think we need to stretch and go a little bit farther. Ms. Rosen, comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brotem. Mr. Powers, um, went and got the actual Windjammer integration plan and pointed out that, uh, there were several given elements in the park, including the park's wetlands, kitchens, parking, restrooms, windmill and site furnishings. So those were things that, um, the community reinforced that they wanted to have in the park. So that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you very much. Uh, additional comments? Mr. Spadeus?
Thank you. I was actually, I was saving most of those for the windmill conversation, but I was thinking of the Windjammer Park integration plan. Um, this came up to my attention. I mean, obviously we were looking at this and trying to figure out how to pay for it. At the, I don't know what we call it, the waste, the Clean Water Facility meeting we have every two weeks, a council member, Almberg, and I sit on. And one of the things I noticed was the kitchens are still, the old kitchens are still out there. And so I asked staff what, what's going on there and their interpretation of the instruction they got from us was until we know what we're gonna do, those kitchens stay. And so are we going to address, and, and my thoughts were those kitchens need to go. Uh, but are we going to address that in any conversation? Is this an appropriate time to address? I think that ties into this conversation.
If we decide to move forward with that, we will arrange for demolition. It'll be a contingency item, cost contingency item. But one of the issues we have with that, there's asbestos in the roof, so I have to remediate that, but definitely we can take them down. To take them down is not the hard part. It's, oh boy, asbestos causing us...
So let me ask a question a different way. If we did, if we did not approve this today, would staff want very specific instructions to what to do with those kitchens?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. For me, um, I agree with Mr. Larson and maybe even Mr. Weesner, you commented on some of the kitchen prices. I'm leaning towards supporting this for a couple of reasons. One, and you, you kind of said it was more visionary statement, we need to move on. Those old kitchens, while they are functional, um, I've been down there, um, I've called Hank to tack on fascia boards that, there's so many ferns growing out between the fascia and the roof that is popping the boards off. Uh, they've served us, they've served us probably fairly well, but it might be time to make an investment, uh, in some new kitchens. Are, is, does it ever get any cheaper? I don't think it does. Could we scale back the design and do something a little simpler? Probably. Would it save us a couple hundred thousand, a hundred thousand? I don't know. But I don't think to go in there and rework dirt and disturb the, even though we're gonna have future park improvements, I don't want to do any more disturbing than we have to. The other thing to keep in mind is staff stretched here and Mr. Huby alluded to it, but we're really combining a couple of phases into a first phase. And you guys really stretched and I applaud you for that, to, to try and get as much of this work done as possible and have as big of impact as possible. That impact comes with a price tag, obviously, and we're trying to sort through that. So I wish Island County would have stepped up. From what I hear, the, the applications were, were very good applications. I don't know why they, I didn't listen to their logic as to why they chose not to fund them. Uh, but in lieu of that, it's up to us to decide, do we pony up? In this case, it sounds like REIT funds are probably the most viable option. So, um, I went back, I reviewed a lot of the elements that the Windjammer Park integration plan calls for and what the public wanted and kitchens were in there. And so while they're appearing to be fairly expensive kitchens per square foot, um, I am going to support it.
Uh, Mr. Councilman Weesner?
Thank you, Mayor Brotem. So I, I too, uh, struggled with this over the weekend and, uh, decided to go out and, and, and seek information, um, because I really was hinging, uh, one way or the other, um, on this. You know, part of it, uh, part of me says, you know, one point two million dollars for a kitchen's a lot of money, but the reality is, I think I've come to grasp a little bit more with, you know, the cost of public construction, having been in the private sector. I did go out and, and, and do, do a little research about how we came up with these designs and quite frankly, I was pleased with what I found. You know, our staff did have some input upon these designs, uh, uh, the type of material, the type of construction, uh, the durability of them, uh, which certainly, um, adds to the cost. I do feel these to be, uh, fifty-year structures. I do feel that, uh, if we didn't do them now, um, they probably wouldn't happen. And if they did, it would certainly be at a significantly increased cost. I, I tried to come here today with, uh, still a little bit of open mind, uh, about it. Wanted to hear what everybody else. The reality is I'm gonna, I'm gonna end up supporting this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it because I think we need to all get behind it. Um, I think it's important for, uh, the, the, the community to, to have a unified voice behind this. I think this is something good for our town. You know, it, you know, it, to, to say it's right, you're gonna go ask ten different people and get ten different opinions, right? But i- in the end, I, I think it's good. I think, uh, the timing is, is everything. You know, I, I'd hate to see us go down there and, and re-tear up what we've already done in order to do this later date. I commend staff for, for digging in. Um, I really appreciate that and, and finding a logical way that, that wasn't robbing a piggy bank somewhere. Uh, I, I do commend you for that and, and, um, that's, that's my take on this. I'm, I'm gonna get behind it and, and be a cheerleader and, and, uh, look forward to a fantastic new facility next year.
Any other comments from council members? I'll entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve the use of REIT one and REIT two to fund the additional improvements to Windjammer Park Phase One for the pavilion and the west kitchen.
Second.
There's been a motion to, uh, to approve the use of REIT one and REIT two to fund the additional improvements to Windjammer Park, pavilion and the west kitchen, and there was a second. Call for a vote. Uh, Mr. Almberg, I want to be sure we hear your vote?
Yeah.
All right. Rest of council members? Yes or no? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one, two, three. And Mr. Larson?
I will abstain.
Oh, and you abstain? Okay. Did we get that, Ms.? All right. Thank you.
Please re, please repeat the, uh, the, uh, vote results.
Uh, four, four... Five, four, one against.
One abstention.
One abstention, sorry. My mistake. One abstention. All right. Next up is engineering.
I guess that's me. So, um, I have several items coming up and, um, one of my colleagues said I was gonna suck all the area over, so I apologize if I answered that. So the first item is, um, the Veterans Memorial Park waterfront trail repair. This, um, project is in the waterfront trail out by, uh, Veterans Memorial Park across from Skoda Valley College. The initial purpose was to produce a bid-ready set of plans, specifications and estimate for repair of that trail. A few years ago, we had a section of it sloughed off and the ultimate purpose now is to update that PS and E package to the current standards and federal and state regulations so that we can advertise the project and get construction bids. So here's just a few photos of it. We did have an area sloughed off, so we went and put the wood railing around that area We did have an area sloughed off, so we went and put the wood railing around that area to divert the trail around, um, the sloughing. So, in two thousand thirteen, as I mentioned, the bluff adjacent to this section of the trail sloughed. We put in the railings and, and diverted the trail away from the bluff failure. In two thousand fifteen, we received some, uh, Transportation Alternative Program grant funds for the project, thirty thousand dollars for design and a hundred and twenty thousand for construction. In the spring of two thousand sixteen, the project was submitted for permits, and then we submitted it to WashDOT, uh, for authorization to solicit bids, and WashDOT came back, and they had identified some changes that would be necessary to the, the, uh, bid set to bring the, the documents into compliance with state and federal regulations, and at that point, we had some competing priorities and some staffing changes, and the project just got put on hold for a while. So, um, now we're ready to start again, and we need to get the plans and specifications up to current standards so that we can go out and advertise for construction bids. So, here's a, a plan view of what's being proposed, and we will be, um, constructing the trail around the, the area that had sloughed off. And here's some section views of that same design. So, we have requested, um, remember, we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, in grant money for construction, and we had thirty thousand for design. We've expended all that design money, so we now need additional funds to bring the plans and, and bid documents up to current standards. So we've requested that we be allowed to transfer fifteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars of the previously approved construction funds to cover costs for, um, David Evans and Associates to, uh, um, bring, bring those plans up to current standards. There was also a, a little less than a thousand dollar cost overrun on the previous design contract. Uh, the local WashDOT office, regional headquarters, has approved this change, and they have sent it up to state head, headquarters for approval, and we're expecting that within a week or so. Um, and then, we went to the Island County Regional Transportation Planning Organization, so the ITP, uh, whatever those letters are. Um, anyway, uh, we had, uh, submitted an additional request for, um, construction funding that was submitted to the Technical Advisory Committee a few weeks ago, and, um, they, I, we believe at this point are recommending that for approval to the, um, board. This would be our project budget, so we are asking, um, for money to complete the design. That's the fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars with David Evans and Associates. Um, we will need to come back. Once we get bids, we will need to ha, hire someone to do the construction management and the construction staking. Those are our estimates at this time. Those are included in the funding that we have requested, uh, through the, through the TAP grant program. And at this point, we are, uh, asking that the council approve a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the professional services agreement between the City of Oak Harbor and David Evans and Associates in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars to update the plan specs and estimate bid package for the purpose of soliciting construction bids. So once, um, David Evans completes that design, then we have to get approval from WashDOT again to make sure that our, that that package meets current standards.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that has any comments since this will be an action item that will be voted on? Who would like to ask questions or comment? All righty, I will open up to the council. Uh, Mr. Almberg, I'll give you first dibs on this, if you have any questions. Sir?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor Protem. And, uh, Kathy, I believe that's you who will be answering questions, is that correct?
I will do my best.
All right. Um, so, did I just hear you say that this additional fourteen thousand eight thirty-four adds support services and construction staking to, uh, David Evans' contract?
No, you did not hear that. What you heard was that the fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars is what is needed for David Evans to make the necessary changes and bring the, um, bid documents up to current standards with WashDOT. In addition to that, in addition to that, at a later date, we will be coming and asking for funds to, um, provide for construction administration and construction staking.
Okay. Uh, my first question is, can you briefly describe, um, why we had these delays? The statement in our package says, "competing priorities." Can you be more specific about that? Because we only delayed this for maybe a year and a half.
Um, well, Development Review had picked up. Uh, we've been down in engineer, in the engineering division for several years. We were unable to actually find someone to fill an open position. So, uh, as Development Review picked up, that became a priority. Um, we had, uh, other issues that took away the city engineers' attention away from some of these other projects that were, um, issues related to the, the clean water facility that became a priority. Um, uh, recently, this past year, we've had, um, sewer line design for, uh, an economic development project out on Twenty First Court. So there, we've, we've had to, we've had to shuffle some things around, and then we also had some staffing changes, and, um, we are now down three engineers. So, that's kinda where we're at.
Okay. Then, as I, as I went through this package, the agenda statement said that there are no significant changes to David Evans' contract, um, deliverables or obligations, but there's a twenty-nine percent increase to their contract. And as you know, I had a tendency to look at these percentages, and a twenty-nine percent increase when we are only going to, when I say only, they're only going to check standards, the specifications update, I mean, that's a specification thing. Don't we just cut and paste in those kind of things for the specifications? And the next question is, on the drawings, the technical drawings, can you describe any changes on the technical drawings that would impact their contract that would increase their timeline for their CAD operators and their designers?
Well, I can tell you that this is a federally funded project, so it adds a whole different level of the complexity in terms of making sure it's, uh, it's more than just the WashDOT standards. It's, there's a lot of, excuse me, federal, like, regulations and, and standards that, uh, language that have to get into the bid documents, and, um, we need to, it is complex. It does take time to make sure that everything is in there. We had a project in our past history where one paragraph was left out, and it nearly cost us our grant funding at the end of construction. So there is a lot of time and effort that has to go into that and back and forth between, uh, the designer and WashDOT in getting that approval to go to bid. Um, I'm not su, so certain about the changes, they're not, probably not gonna be changing much in terms of the actual plan set. Is that right, Alex? Um, I'm gonna have Alex, I'm gonna have Alex come up. Uh, hold on, I'm gonna have Alex come up.
All right.
Okay, sorry.
Hello, council member. Uh, Alex Warner, project manager here.
Okay, Alex?
Yes.
Um, let me just ask this question based on what Kathy said to me. It, this was, it's a federally funded or a WashDOT-funded project originally?
I can answer that. It is a federally funded, sorry, it's a federally funded project with the funds being administered by WashDOT. So it's passed.
Okay. So, then we did not use, or we did use federal language in the original contract with David Evans?
We, we did use the WashDOT form, contract form, specific to using these federal funds.
Yes, and there, there are several sections in the specifications that are related to the use of these federal funds. However, those change over time, and, and, uh, actually, they change quite frequently, and so, when we get ready to go out to bid, we have to make sure that we are using the most current language.
Okay. And then, so let me move on a little bit here. Um, you know, I, I have to accept that because I, you know, I'm not obviously there to, or have I compared, you know, the changes. Um, but, my, the other question I have is, or actually, I have two questions. What is the status of the July twelfth WashDOT grant request for additional funds?
Oh, Mr. Powers is coming to answer that.
Uh, Mayor Protem, council members, I was at the IRTPO, uh, Policy Board meeting this morning, uh, for Mayor Severance, and the Policy Board approved the recommendations that came from the Technical Advisory Committee, so that included our request for additional funding for this project. Um, so that will now flow, continue to flow up the chain, uh, on its way to be part of Washington State's STIP, which is their, uh, their tip, basically. So, uh, good news on that front.
So, it's in the process, it hasn't been approved for additional funding?
Well, it's been, it was approved at our local level, which was the next step, Mr. Almberg. Um, so, until we knew that the Policy Board was going to approve it, uh, all they, all they had, or all we had, was the Technical Advisory Committee's recommendation. Uh, so now, IRTPO has taken the official action to say that it is now part of their transportation improvement plan.
So that is construction dollars that is going before the board now. We have, we have, we, we have WashDOT approval to take some of the previously approved construction dollars and use that to finish the design.
Well, I understand that in the statement in the, in our agenda package, uh, but are, are you saying that we, it is confirmed that we will get the funds to complete the construction if we approve this, uh, David Evans' engineering amendment?
No. That has to go before the call, right?
No, no, that's already, it's, Mr. Almberg, to the best of my knowledge, um, since it's been approved at the local level, um, and that effort is coordinated with our, uh, WashDOT representatives, um, then, to the best of my knowledge, yes, it's, it's approved unless, for some reason, the state has, um, unforeseen challenges with their funding. But otherwise, it's, it's been approved at our local level, it's, it's going up to be included as part of the state's plan.
I'm sorry, I thought I had to go to the commissioners.
Okay. So let me just cut to the chase on this. I guess the bottom line of my concern here, and, and obviously, the councils will do what they want to do, um, we don't have, we don't have funds guaranteed to complete this project, and when, if we're going to approve this amendment to this contract, and then they go ahead and do the amendment changes, current changes, and then they're going to update the engineer's estimate, are we putting the cart before the horse? Maybe we should find out if we have those funds first before we do an updated estimate. And let me add to that, maybe we shouldn't pay for an updated engineer's estimate, uh, if we have the funds go out for bid, 'cause, um, you're gonna pay the engineer to do an estimate, that's all it's going to be, is an engineer's estimate, that you can probably put twelve or fifteen percent on the existing estimate to call for an approximate estimate for this project rather than spending money on David Evans to, to do an estimate. Why are we doing the amendment when we don't know for sure we're gonna do the project?
Um, okay, so, to your question or your statement about the engineer's estimate, we have to submit an engineer's estimate to WashDOT in order to get approval to solicit bids. So, that has to be prepared by whoever is completing the, the plans and specifications. It's just a requirement of the, of the funding stream. So, we, um, we can't eliminate that from the scope of services with David Evans. Uh, we're fairly confident, based on what Steve witnessed this morning, that we will get the construction funding. If you approve this, we should know, I would think, within the next couple of weeks or month. I suppose we could wait on the David Evans' contract? Steve's got a, Steve's got his calendar.
I have, no, I have, I have some late-breaking news, if I may.
All right, please.
Um, so this is from, um, and you'll wanna check your email. So this is from Brian Wood, who is the coordinator at the county for the, um, IRTPO, um, and he's sent Alex an email and copied me on it, indicating that he's already been in contact with, uh, WashDOT, the person in charge of the STIP down there. Uh, and I'll just read a portion of this. "IRTPO approved additional funding for this project as part of the IRTPO 2018 Call for Projects. The amendment changed total cost from a hundred and fifty to two sixty-five, seven forty-two, reflecting an updated total, and added one hundred and fifteen, seven hundred and forty-two dollars of additional construction funding, uh, no required match, into 2019." And the WashDOT person he was referencing said that she would, um, allow that to be part of the process for this year. So, to the best of what we know, um, we are on track to receive the funding.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
And, and I heard you say, and not with no additional match?
Yes, this, this funding sto, source has no match.
Right. This is different than the regular, if you might wanna think about, the regular RTPO dollars that we use, where we have a thirteen and a half percent match requirement. This bucket of RTPO funds has no, uh, match requirement.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, Kathy, and Alex, and, and council. I will stand by. I'm gonna support this subject to what other council members may say.
All right. Anybody else? Councilman Weasner, please.
I just wrote a couple of questions. Could you, could you bring up that slide about the, what the total budget cost? So if I understand correctly, we've been approved now for two hundred and sixty-five thousand, which does give us the money to cover the fourteen thousand dollar, fourteen eight thirty-four additional design update, as well as, looks like about an extra thirty thousand dollars to cover possibly any anticipated cost increases since the initial engineer's estimates?
Yes. Yes, and, and it also includes the funding for the construction management and the construction staking.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? I will entertain a motion, please. Mr. Spadius?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the consultant agreement with David Evans and Associates for design services on the Veterans Memorial Park Waterfront Trail repair project in a negotiated hourly rate, maximum amount payable of fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Second. We have a motion and a second. The motion is authorizing the mayor to sign the consultant's agreement with David Evans and Associates for design service on the Veterans Memorial Park Waterfront Trail repair project in a negotiated hourly rate, minimum amount payable of fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Almberg votes, yes. Aye.
Okay. All opposed? All right, this concludes our action items at this time, and, but we have other agenda items to go to. Thank you, Mr. Almberg.
Mayor Protem, please give me a vote count on that, I didn't hear that.
Six, four, zero nays.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
One correction, uh, Mayor Protem, I think you said minimum amount payable on that bid. Any read back of the motion? Yes, thank you, it's a maximum, not to exceed.
Maximum amount payable. Thank you for catching that.
Thank you.
Is that all right? Okay, we got it. All right, non-action items. Engineering, update on city streets, Pavement Services, Inc.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I have with me today, um, John Duval from Pavement Services, Inc. They came out and did an analysis of the condition of our streets, and, um, Mr. Duval is here to present the draft findings. They also looked at, um, some recommendations, developed some recommendations for new pavement sections, how much asphalt over how much base, uh, as we move forward. So, I will turn it over to Mr. Duval.
Very good. Uh, members of the council, uh, it's a pleasure to be here today. My name's John Duval, represent Pavement Services, Inc., and we've been working with, uh, the city Public Works Department Engineering Group here for-
here for better part of six or seven months here to determine the existing condition of the streets, and also to make some recommendations, prioritize some work going forward to help you manage the street budget. So I'd just like to take a few minutes, if you would, to kind of run through this project, what the goal and objectives were, where we are with this, and what we've learned so far regarding your street system. So again, the overall goal really is to, to be better able to manage the limited dollars that are brought in for city street maintenance. It's a fact of life, we only have as much money that comes in through various means to manage our city street system. So we want to have the tools at hand that allow you to prioritize projects and select the right treatments for streets at the right time, so that you can be sure that, that these treatments are being used at the right time, and we're achieving good street maintenance at the lowest lifecycle cost. So, actually, I appreciate some of the earlier comments about the Windjammer Park. I heard a lot, some of the echoes in there about long-serving life, durability, good structure. All of that rings true on a lot of these projects, including your street system, which is one of your basic service items, that service infrastructure pieces that you, that you have here in the community. So the specific objectives of the project really are, first and foremost, we wanted to take an inventory of your street system and determine what condition are your streets in based on a standard methodology. We chose the Pavement Condition Index methodology, which is essentially a score between 0 and 100, which rates a street based on a visual survey. We also implemented a management system, so that the City Public Works Department Engineering Group can actually have a computerized system then to help manage. And as, as things change each year, as the, as the crews go out and take a look at a street, update the condition, it allows them to also update the priorities for maintenance as you go forward. Well, this all is integrated into your geographic information system, so there's a visual map-oriented system for reporting this. And then finally, kind of a little bit of an extra thing, that we, we, I guess extra in terms of it's not normally the part of the package, but this is something that the public works folks want, was they wanted us to take a look at your traffic and the material characteristics of your pavement systems out here, and determine what would be the best pavement sections going forward, recommending, recommendations for construction going forward for arterials, collectors, and neighborhood streets, so that you can have a confidence that you're building long-lasting, durable streets going forward. So that was the, those are the objectives, and I'm kind of, kind of take them in order of the last topic first, because it is a little bit of a extra thing. We'll take that and set it aside to your satisfaction, and then we'll move on to the main body of the work. So, part one of this presentation will be about the standard pavement sections. What we do here, in this case, what we did, because you have a large system, you have 71 miles of streets that you manage in the city. What we wanted to do is to take a look at a variety of different streets. Any, you know, arterials, collector streets, and, and neighborhood streets. So, a variety of different traffic conditions, and also different geographical areas of the city to the best that we could, to make sure we had a representative sample, if you will, of what the system looks like. So these are the streets that we picked. I don't have the names of them here off the top of my head, but as you can see, the main purpose of this exhibit is that you can see that they were selected at various parts of the city to try to make sure that we weren't just looking in, in one area. The next piece of this is the methodology. We chose to use really two fundamental types of testing here. On the left, what you see is what we call a falling weight deflectometer. It's a device that we brought out here and non-destructively tested each of these 20 streets using, using a weight package. It drops the weight on the pavement, we measure deflections, and it kind of simulates what a normal truck, essentially a truck would, would do as it passes by your city, passes by your street. And that way, we can infer from that a lot of information about the structure of your street system. The other thing that we did was, on each of those 20 segments, we did some coring, to take, take a look at how they were constructed, what they're constructed now, and most importantly, provide some access to do some material sampling of the base aggregates, and then even into the subgrade soils here in the city. So, at those 20 locations, we did some sampling and testing. What we came up with really in that study was, the, the result of that study was that for both, we came up with both a flexible pavement, which is constructed of asphalt, and if the city were ever to choose, to choose a concrete section for some reason, we have a table here now of standard pavement sections that you can use, so that folks in engineering can assign this to different streets. And an important thing here is that, for, for example, your neighborhood collector, local and collector streets. So let's take local streets, it just says, we, we know based on what we've done here in the study and looking forward in 20 years of traffic, you can get by with a three-inch asphalt section over a four-inch aggregate base for a total seven-inch section. And then, as you go up in traffic, all the way up to your truck and transit routes, you've got heavier-duty sections, five and six inches over, six inches of aggregate base. So with confidence now, the City Public Works and Engineering Group can, can know how to, how to build confidently these structurally capable sections for the streets. Same goes for the concrete sections, we've established those as well, if you were to ever choose to go that route. Typically, it may not be, it may be cost prohibitive to do that, they tend to be higher initial cost anyway. So with that, that just kind of wraps up this little specialty subtopic of our overall study, that we did indeed develop these standard pavement sections going forward. What I'd like to talk about next is the main body of work, which was to study the pavement condition of the entire 71-mile street section, streets system. So, what we have, we call this as Pavement Condition Index Survey, and also the implementation of the management system, the type of system. It's called a Street Saber Management System, which is a system that was selected for the, for this particular application. I suppose if you've been on a city council meeting for any length of time, there's probably been a pavement guy that came to you and presented this curve to you and says, you know, pavements perform very well over time, early in life, but when they start to go, they go quickly. And so you have to be aware of the, the rate of deterioration of condition over time. And this curve is a very commonly-used representation of how pavements, the pavement lifecycle, if you will. So we rate pavements on a scale of 0 to 100, and here are seven categories that are roughly about 15 points of each. So it ranges from good to satisfactory, fair. Notice, we don't try to overblow the, we don't go out there and say outstanding or excellent. We start off with good, I think that's a, that's, that's interesting about the way we look at pavements.
That's how my kids' grade school report cards are, too, by the way.
There you go. Right, yeah, we don't want to, you know, necessarily over, our streets aren't necessarily overachievers, but if they're good, that means that they're the top of the, top of the class, so to speak. But they can get very poor, very, very poor, serious, or even failed. We rarely see failed pavements by then, they're almost impassable, and you wouldn't want to have those types of streets in your system. So, what I can tell you is that this is kind of a standard methodology used throughout the country, and we call this PCI system. We applied this system to visual systems, so we have our trained raters going out and doing this rating on all the streets in the system. And it turns out that you have 71 miles, centerline miles of streets under management here in the city. I want to point out that we do not include in this any of the state highways, or any kind of county road, or any road or street that's under separate jurisdiction in this, this county. So, we are looking at streets that are managed by the city. In blue. All right, so, oh gosh, this is where I have to say, I have to apologize because of the small type. But the important thing here, if you can't read it, and I think I have a copy here, so that I can read it a little bit closer, but the main point here is that when we break these streets down, the 71 miles down, into functional class, we also broke them down into quadrants, because working with the folks in engineering, we found that that was a useful way to describe certain sections of the city street network. But the majority of the streets, for one, vast majority are considered local streets, if that makes sense. It's the streets that you live on, those are the streets that are in front of the school, perhaps. And then there are smaller quantities of collectors and arterial streets that, that are there, shown here in the smaller, the smaller graphs here. And then likewise, you have typically an equal amount of streets in each of the quadrants, except for the southeast quadrant, which is where most of the streets double, about double the amount of street mileage is located. We also ended up with a few that we didn't throw in any of the quadrants, so we have a small number that were used as dividing lines, and we chose to just consider them separately. But in this case, again, it just shows you how we broke out the inventory.
Question?
Yes.
You referenced the big one of southeast, but it says southwest, was that misspeak, or is it truly?
That's a misspeak, I'm sorry. It's, and I'm going to need to just double-check that, that I'm reading this correctly, because I...
The big orange guy is south?
The big orange guy is south, southwest. I apologize for that.
It's good.
Southwest. I've got it clearly right here in front of me now. So it's southwest, thank you. The overall result of our study is that the, again, what we do is the overall, we roll up all the individual scores for individual streets, and then that tick comes up to an overall area-weighted score of 77 out of 100. So that indicates, again, on that scale of 0 to 100, that the city of Harbor's streets are generally in satisfactory condition. So, that's, that's good news. That, you know, and that's represented here in a couple of other smaller graphs. So when we break this down by functional class and by quadrant, let's take a look at that, and I'll try to read those off this report, so I don't get it, it's harder to see up here, and I apologize for the type. But what we see here is that when we break it down into collector, collectors over here, arterial, minor arterial, and other principal arterials, and then here's your residential streets. What it shows is that by far, these are in categories, again, blue being good is the highest. The majority of these are in green, which is very good. And then lesser amounts in lower categories. Yellow being, yellow being fair, orange being poor, and red being very poor. So there's a few very poor condition streets on the residential and local area, but for the most part, it shows that by functional class, these streets are showing up as very good. And then, of course, if we look over by quadrant, it's pretty much equal across the board, with a little slightly higher level, again in the orange. This shows 80 versus 77, 77, 72, 71, and 80. 80 being, again, in the southwest quadrant, and the lowest one being here in the southeast quadrant, the yellow. So again, if you look at it from a quadrant-by-quadrant basis, you can kind of sense that there is a little bit of variation in the street, overall street condition. All right, so, what do we do next with this information? So we consider that to be our inventory and our condition analysis? So we now have a condition for every street, we roll it up to quadrant level, as well as up to the overall network. Now, what we do with this study is to develop some recommendations and some budget alternatives for the city to consider. And this is a graphic that tries to, to demonstrate how we go about that. The first thing that we do is we develop an overall maintenance and repair backlog. In this case, we've developed a, we've computed a 3.6, 3.06 million backlog in maintenance and repair for city streets. Then we apply that analysis now, we've selected four budget scenarios. Four budget scenarios that I'll try to describe here in just a sense, in just a second. But each of these budget scenarios results in a further backlog of work and an overall PCI rating. So essentially, if we know, if we know the rating of our streets, and we know how much backlog we have now, then we can determine, we can analyze this by, by, by four different budget scenarios, by varying the amount of money that we essentially apply to the city street budget. And that will move the pavement condition up or down at the end of that five, by the way, this is over a five-year period. And it'll also result in a backlog at the end of that five-year period that will be either higher or lower than it is currently. So this is how we're trying to make some brackets, some recommendations for you, and give you something to think about. These are the five budget scenarios. Well, by the way, I said four, but we add one more, which is a do-nothing budget, which again, some of these budgets are a little bit artificial. We recognize that you're likely not going to do nothing. Pardon my grammar for that, but the point is, you're going to do something. So this is really just more of a, one bracket on one side. And there's another side over here called the eliminate backlog scenario, which again, is a highly aggressive, overachieving backlog diminishing budget scenario that says, look, if we throw all the money that we can at this over five years and reduce our backlog of work to zero, what would that cost us? So it's again, kind of a bracket to look at maybe the ends of this. And in the middle are a few more realistic options for considering how much we should apply to street maintenance. And we pull out, here's a $500,000 per year budget, here's a $250,000 per year budget, and here's a $100,000 per year budget. And if we look at those, those are the kind of the three in the middle that are likely to be more realistic. But all five of them end up with a difference in the resulting PCI, or the overall condition of the pavement, as well as the, the amount of deferred maintenance backlog that you have at the end of this five-year period. So what I can tell you again is that if we are most aggressive, it would, would tell us that if we, over five years, we reduced the backlog to zero, we would have an 85 PCI, we would increase it from 77 to 85. If we were to do nothing, it would fall to 69. So in the middle, we have three realistic options. One says, if you want to apply $500,000 a year of street maintenance here, you could keep it at 77. If you apply $250,000 a year, you'd still, you still have a slight degradation in the overall quality to 73. And here, the $100,000 a year budget would result in a degradation to about 70. And then also, you can see down here, various degrees of increasing backlog as we defer maintenance that's, if we apply, if we don't, if we lower the budget amount, it results in increasing backlog, essentially. So, that's kind of, this table here summarizes the bulk of the work that we've done here to project budget alternatives for the city of Oak Harbor going forward. And I think with that, oh, this was just a couple of shots, graphs. If we play this out over time, what does this look like? Here's the $500,000 annual budget. If we start with a 77 here, this is the, there's two pieces of information on this chart. There's a graph showing the PCI, 77, and there's a bar chart showing the amount of money in the backlog. So we start with 77, it comes up a little bit as we apply funds, but it ends up right back at 77 over the five-year period. And likewise, the budget and the backlog starts to reduce, but then climbs again. If we go to a $100,000 budget, as another example, we would see here again, and we start off with a 77, we'd, we'd start to see that we're going to degrade to 60, this one shows 79, I'm sorry, 70 here after five years with a $100,000 budget, and the backlog or deferred maintenance simply increasing. So, that's a quick summary of the, of the study. Be happy to take any of your questions, and that's it for me at this point.
Council members, questions? Mr. Spadius.
Comment and question, thank you very much. There's a twisted part of me that would really like to get behind the numbers on that and watch all those machinations happen, but I'll, I appreciate you breaking it down with some fairly simple graphs. I guess question then, as we move forward with the Transportation Benefit District, I'm assuming we'll use this information to see what, we're going to utilize this information, it's very valuable, so...
Yes.
I appreciate, I think it's, have we ever done this before?
Not at this, up to this extent.
Councilman Larson.
I do appreciate the extensive, exhaustive detail that was in this. What I found interesting was that not only does it cost us a lot more money if we wait too long, but it costs us money if we don't wait long enough, if, you know, we, this helps us identify that sweet spot in the middle, and I found that very helpful. I just wanted to... I just wanted to clarify one thing, right now, we have a current backlog of three-point-zero-six million dollars. And so if, at the very least of these options, if we spend at least $500,000 a year, at the end of five years, we're looking at an increase, and we're looking at a backlog of 5.3 million dollars.
Yeah, there's slight difference in those numbers, actually, the number, and I, I think I, I didn't drill down there and describe that in enough detail, the three million is actually a, is the first year of the program under the eliminate backlog scenario, and it's actually a 7.025 million, I think it shows up in this table here, that the overall five-year backlog is, for five years, is seven million. That's what we have staring at us right now. If we, we're gonna fix everything in the next five years, it costs us 7.025 million, and as a result of that, you'd have a PCI score of eighty-five. Everything would be bright and shiny and looking great.
Thanks, and I have one quick question for you, Patricia, refunds could be used for this, correct?
For some parts, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Have to look deeper, not look deeper into that yet, though.
Okay.
We have faith in you. Councilman Wiesner?
A follow-up and clarification for that, the 5.2 through, 5.32 million deferred maintenance, I'm assuming you're assuming some sort of an increase in cost related to the resurfacing, and so therefore, that $5 million is actually pretty comparable to $3 million today dollars?
It may be, there's, it's probably a little bit overstated, but it's, there's a three percent annual increase baked into these numbers, so as we go through each year, we're inflating the cost of crack sealing and, you know, overlays by, by a three percent per year to account for those cracks.
So even if we were sitting steady, we'd expect an increase there?
Well, that's correct, that's correct, yeah.
And, and maybe, question for you, Ms. Rosen, how does the recommended street overlay thicknesses compare to what we're currently requiring?
I'm not sure on the collector and arterials, but we did recently increase for residential, we're on three on four right now.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Any other comments, Councilman Spades?
Just curious, on the scrap, the deferred maintenance, if we had a magic wand and we got rid of the backlog, the twenty, twenty-twenty-three deferred maintenance is point, or 310,000?
Correct.
Is that kind of an annualized number that we should be expecting right now to maintain? Keep our streets in tip-top shape?
That, that's a great question, I've never quite thought about it that way, but it, it might be, because that's, that's on the, that's on the, if you had a system that was at eighty-five, one of the, one of the underlying assumptions baked into the number of, into the algorithm, is that the cost of the treatments, so, when your pavements are in good condition, it just costs a lot less to maintain those. The types of treatments that you're applying, the types of materials that you're buying, the methods are so much more inexpensive that it doesn't take as much money to maintain and keep a system in good shape. It's when your system degrades, that's when it gets really expensive because of the nature of the work. So I'm thinking about that when you made your comment, I think that's an excellent point, it very well could be, because right now, we're saying it would take about $500,000 a year to keep a, a system going that has a rating of seventy-seven. If your system is at eighty-five, it very well could be that that 310,000 would be a reasonable number.
I was just curious if there's any way to extrapolate that for budgeting purposes? I mean, I think in a dream world, if we could ever get caught up, it would be nice. I know you guys do what you can do with what you have, I was just curious what that number might be. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? All right, Clean Water Facility, thank you very much, and to you all, appreciate it.
So Brett and I are gonna take team this, we're here to talk about some needed contract amendments, one expense that you need to be aware of that will occur at the end of construction, and then something that's optional, that you might wanna consider. So historically, we have kept the scope of our consulting contracts very tight, and we've amended them as we've gone along throughout this project. The, the feeling has been that we didn't want to approve too much, because there's a sense that if there's a big pot of money, we will find some way, someone will find some way to spend that. So we have kept KBA's contract very tight, we've kept ERCI's contract very tight. As Brett mentioned earlier, we're not concerned with needing to amend Corolo's contract at this time, but we will need to amend KBA's contract to continue services through the project closeout, and we also have a need to amend ERCI's contract for additional, additional archaeology services through construction and closeout. And finally, at the end of the project, the RCW for heavy civil GCCM projects require that we have a third-party final closeout audit, and then we have an option, Enviro Issues has helped us with our public outreach, they do a lot of the graphics for our posters, they've done our mailers, our newsletters, they help up, keep up our project website. Their services have been contracted through the ribbon cutting of the Clean Water Facility, which will occur a little bit later this year, but we don't have their services contracted through the ribbon cutting of the park improvement, so that's something you might wanna think about. I'm sorry, I think I went too far. So KBA provides financial support, construction administration, and special inspection services for the Clean Water Facility. The last amendment to KBA's, KBA's contract was approved in May 2016, so over two years ago, and it was expected to cover services through October of 2018. They, they do provide the construction administration, they provide a lot of project accounting and record-keeping that is required as part of our funding stream, they have provided the majority of the inspections on the project through special inspections, and that was not ever anticipated in any, in any previously approved scope of work. However, we found that there was so much work going on at one time, that in order to keep the project moving, we needed to supplement our own building staff, because there's only two people in that department. So KBA took that on, but it was never anticipated in a scope of work for them. They also witnessed and certified startup of equipment, and they prepared that monthly report that we started giving you in the past several months. An amendment to their contract is gonna be necessary, number one, because they have been providing that special inspection support to us, and that was never really anticipated in their scope of work, so that's eaten up. I, I think Kay told me yesterday, that cost us about over $400,000.
Yes.
That ate up about $400,000 of their, of their contract.
I may add that special inspections are separate, they are required by code, to meet building code, and we do other types of inspections, like normal construction inspection, and that is, this inspector acts as the city's official inspector for the building department, so it's necessary by code.
The amount of self-performed time and materials work performed by Hoffman has been greater than anticipated, and that was because when we went out for bids on some of the GMPs, we got no bids. And so Hoffman stepped up and took that work on as self-performed. That means that there, there's more time spent monitoring how many people are working, what equipment is on the project, it's very different than if it were a lump sum, because we're paying time and materials, so that has to be tracked. So there's been additional time spent doing that. The work has progressed faster than originally planned, which has burned up more of KBA's time, so we're, we're actually ahead of schedule, so that's, that's a good thing, but we've used their, their allotment faster. And the previous amendment did not include Benjammer Park improvements, so again, it was, the last amendment was May of 2016, the design for the park hadn't been completed, we never, we didn't know what their level of service was gonna be required, and we always anticipated having to come back to amend their contract because of the policy that we've, we've implemented to keep things tight and come back as we need money. It didn't include, didn't include the normal construction closeout services, and we are going to need some assistance in closing out the grants and SRF loans, it's, again, because of the funding streams and federal funds being involved, there is a lot of paperwork with that, which you wouldn't normally have on a, on a city-funded public works project. The number of KBA inspectors onsite has decreased and will continue to decrease as construction activities are completed and we transition to startup. I, I believe that KBA has, has always been very effective in managing their staff and rightsizing and having the num, the right number of people working on the job at the right time. As I mentioned, we will need the services for construction administration, project accounting, record-keeping, and reporting through completion of GMP-13, and that's the normal project closeout and closing out those grants and SRF loans. We are currently in the process of negotiating the final scope of work with KBA, and we have been trying to identify ways in which to fund this contract amendment that will minimize the impact to the bottom line, we are very conscious of the bottom line of this project. There are some unused scope in other contracts that we're not going to need, so we can maybe take some of that and still stay within that existing bottom line. I've talked to Patricia about this, and I've talked to Mr. Powers about this, and I had talked to our previous city administrator about this, about a possible reimbursement to the project from the permit fees that we paid, we paid $314,000 to the City Building Department in permit fees. Normally, when you get a building permit, that includes all of your inspections, so we've paid, right now, we've paid over $400,000 to KBA for inspections, and we've paid the city $314,000, which should cover some of those inspection costs. There are some other possible reimbursements to the project that we're looking into, we lost our city engineer last week, seventy-five percent of his salary benefits, salary and benefits were allocated to this project, we've got a little bit of savings there through the rest of the year that we might be able to, to put towards these KBA costs. And we will be presenting an amendment to the KBA contract to the city council in August, probably the second meeting in August. And that's all I can tell you, I don't have the details, I don't have the numbers yet, but we are working on it. ERCI's contract was last amended in October of 2017, that amendment included some planning, exploration, and monitoring in the park, however, because, again, the park design had not yet been completed, it was difficult to know how much work would be, would be related to archaeological deposits in the park. And I wrote down something Kelly said, she said it's really difficult, it's been really difficult to appreciate both the scope of the park project and how much of the work would be in archaeological deposits, the number of, and the extent of deposits was unanticipated, it is a very rich area down there. And you, with archaeology, you just don't know until you uncover it. So the number and, and extent of the resources identified to date is greater than was anticipated, there is some construction work remaining that could involve cultural resources, and once the field work is complete, there is a requirement for ERCI to prepare reports for submittal to DAP. I think it's important, at this point, to, to remind everyone that this project, ERCI, Kelly Bush, has, is co-permittee with the city. So it's very important that she finish out the project, that she has to file the reports. We, we use our own staff archaeologist as best we can, when he's available, but this isn't the only project that the city is working on, and Gideon's time is spent, most of his time is spent elsewhere in the city, he's very busy working on other things and other projects in the city. So it's, it's not something that we can just say, we're not gonna use ERCI anymore, we're gonna use our own staff archaeologists, we can't do that. Again, we're negotiating that scope of work with ERCI, and the same thing, we are looking for ways to minimize that impact to the bottom line, all of those same things I mentioned previously that we're looking at. The third-party audit, it's required by RCW 3910-350 for GCCM projects, specifically for projects procured as a heavy civil construction project, and the city of Oak Harbor's project is the very first one of those in the state of Washington. We have to pay for that audit, and the purpose is to confirm that the proper accrual of cost is outlined in the contract, and right now, we're estimating that to be about $50,000. I just don't want anybody to be surprised when we get to the end of the project and we have another $50,000 expenditure. And then finally, Enviro Issues, they are currently a subconsultant to Corolo, the current contract includes their services through the ribbon cutting for the Clean Water Facility. If you wish to continue Enviro Issues services through the, the park project, if you see value in that, we'll need a contract amendment, we can either amend Corolo's contract for that, or we can put it as part of KBA's contract. None of them have any issue with, with any, any way we do that, and these services are optional, so that's just something to think about. Any questions?
Any council members have questions? I have one. Because Kelly, I mean, has been so involved, and I know, as a councilwoman, we've been down there to watch what they're doing from the very beginning, have an understanding, will we get a history so that Gideon, being on staff, he can't be there 'cause he's elsewhere, but so that we can keep a history? I mean, we had people going through old, would be news times, to see about a skull being kicked under and something in a construction and was hidden, so I mean, so that maybe we can keep a more accurate history, will we get copies?
Yes.
Of all of that, so we can keep the history?
Yeah, Gideon is actually involved, like I say, he's got a duty, and he's involved all the record-keeping, all our monthly reports, he is involved with some of the field work we do using for that. He's got a lot of other, we're dealing with pine hair issues right now, and so we do have a lot of things going on, he's, as our city archaeologist, we wanna make sure that when the project's done, he can take over a hundred percent for Kelly, and so I feel that, yeah, in terms of message we have coming out is very important, and we need to have a city history for that. We are talking to the tribes in DAP, trying to, that's why Kelly's final report is trying to make that a little more public, so people can understand, you know, legally, we have to keep this stuff confidential, but we have a very good story to tell, I think. A while back, we brought in some of the artifacts we're finding, and we're finding 2,000-year-old stuff out there, and, so yeah, Gideon will, is deeply involved with it, and like I say, he's not disengaged.
Also, we have been, we have been able to do a lot of mapping of location, so, so we will have a lot more information moving forward, so that we, we can plan appropriately, so we're not going to be impacted.
Like the larger amplifier around the lagoon and things like that?
Actually, we've been able, we've been able to clear those kind of things, and that's important, because the filter we're using right now allows us to do that, that we just have to clear areas and understand those areas, so when we move forward, what we're doing today, what Kelly's doing today, really helps in the future.
And I hope that she's still working, that maybe we can have on loan some of those artifacts, that I think, I mean, it was fascinating what council got to see in the little bags that we couldn't really touch, but I think that would help.
That made me very difficult.
I know, but she was gonna work on it, so to see if we could, see what we could have in maybe our conference room or outside of it or something.
So I'll give you a sneak preview of a budget request that will be coming forward. We're going to need to populate the water center, the interpretive center, and so one of the, one of the things that we've talked about having as public educational materials, it deals with cultural resources, and particularly as, as it relates to that site. So we may be able to have, maybe not the specifics, but Kelly does have a lot of replicas that, and, and I think Gideon does as well. that, and I think Gideon does as well, that look very similar.
So, thinking ahead, does Kelly happen to know some grants that we could be writing for now to be ahead instead of missing some of the deadline? I, I don't know, I'm just...
I'll ask her.
I'm throwing against the wall and see what sticks, but that would help.
And I also, I think the tribes might be interested in participating in some of this too because we've had a very intimate relationship with him the last couple of weeks. And so I think they're very satisfied with how we handle things.
I just think if we can keep ahead, I mean, sometimes we get tunnel vision and we're moving along and we forget and all of a sudden like, oh my gosh, we should have done this. So that would be good.
I would, you know, looking back, the MOA has been very successful for us, but you know, one of the things I'd love to do if we ever did something like this in the future or anybody is have more ability to have public disclosure and public comment about what we're doing. I think we do operate in a black box. It's, it's hard to, I really feel that, you know, what's happening is important for the city, you know? And you saw a glimpse of that at the meeting when we passed around the artifacts. And so I brought this up to DAP and up to the tribes and says, you know, we'd really like to have more disclosure on what we're doing because the city's paying for this, but it is good work, you know?
And the other thing on Enviro issues, either or or separate, could they sort of toss out maybe an approximate cost or, or ideas that they could use for helping open the park?
They're, they're working on that.
I think that would help in making, okay.
I just didn't want to have them spend a lot of time preparing something if, if there wasn't any, any interest or any, if, if council didn't see any value in it.
And there's a lot of things going on with the bio-solids and we do have to start marketing and the Navy conversation, you know, as we go into startup, we just have basic, the basic weekly stuff here. Do we want to message more? The demolition coming up, the would-be bank building is going to be interesting. You know, and then the park activities, you know, as the park comes through, we'd really like to get the word out, have, we also have to get the park back to the people, so I think we need to have a, a series of events to hand it back to the public. I don't think it's going to be, be that hard, but I'd still like to, you know, promote our, we get, and I was meeting with Christine Krebs yesterday and she's really looking forward to have the grand opening for the park on the Fourth of July and I think we'd like to do more than that, you know?
Councilman Wiester.
Ms. Rosen, first, I'd like to thank you for the detail there, you know, I mean, explaining what each of these issues and the background. And I also appreciate the fact that you're looking at creative ways to pay for, pay for this. I, I didn't want to comment, I am a bit concerned. You know, a few months ago, the engineer, city engineer stood in front of us and was asked a very direct question about, you know, additional budget items, additional expectations, are there things around the corner that, that we should be expecting in additional costs? And I think his answer, I'd have to play it back, was nothing foreseeable. And it seems to me as though some of these items are foreseeable and I understand some of these are not as part of construction. The fifty thousand dollar audit, obviously, you know, isn't a huge amount of money in the scope of things, but it is real money and something obviously that should have been foreseen. So I'm just going to ask that we continue to, to work very hard in digging into what it's going to take to get this thing flipped on, done, completed. Please continue to keep council advised when, when additional items come up. I asked that question in such a fashion when I did because quite frankly, I, I knew the answer. There are things that probably have been anticipated that haven't been included. So hopefully we can continue to keep this a two-way street, you can continue to keep council advised as things come up, so if you're not surprised and I appreciate your, your timing doing that and, and working towards creative ways to, to pay for these continuing costs and then keep them in check. Thank you. That's it.
Councilman Larson.
Thank you, Ms. Rosen. I had a couple of quick questions. May have put them beat me to one of them and that was in regards to Enviro issues. I'm real interested in seeing what they can continue to do for us and I'm very open to looking at increasing their scope to the ribbon cutting for Windjammer. And so my question was, yes, can we see a cost estimate and can we see some type of list of deliverables? Because we've got a lot of things coming up and some of the suggestions that you guys already made and to see what other interesting ways of getting the message out they might convey.
So...
So, yeah, what that list of deliverables and...
Do you think we can have that by the next workshop in August?
Yes.
So we can bring it back for that next workshop?
Actually, we've started developing a list, but we didn't ask them to flesh it out until we discussed it with the council because I didn't want to have them put a lot of time. So I, you know, at this point, I can, we've kind of talked long-term strategy, so we also can bring it back in terms of more of a shopping list too. There may be some items that, that, you know, whether this, do that. And so that's, was my approach probably is going to come in and give you some options for that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Rosen, could we have this emailed? Is it possible so I can keep it with my packet? I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. All right, windmill, next steps, hot seat here.
Feel the air. Leave in the room now. Share the air. Share the air. All right, next steps on the windmill. The Windjammer Park integration plan, as you saw when Brett showed the, the actual master plan, adopted in June two thousand sixteen by council resolution sixteen fifteen, included a relocation of the windmill in phase two. In May two thousand seventeen, we had a windstorm and we lost some pieces off of the exterior of the windmill and that highlighted some structural deficiencies. So we contracted with a structural engineering firm, Ashley and Vance, and they came out and performed a structural inspection, which resulted in recommendations to address safety concerns. And, and at that time, it was very close to the Fourth of July and we didn't want to have to fence off a large portion of the park to keep people safe from falling pieces of the windmill. In September two thousand seventeen, we, we came to council with four options for final solutions on the windmill. The first one was to remove the entire windmill and reconstruct it at, at another location at a future time. Removal of the rotten members while leaving the building in place with the understanding that a new windmill would be constructed at another location in the future. Designing and making the structural repairs to the windmill in its current location and leaving the windmill as is and providing sufficient fencing to protect the public from falling debris. And remember, at this time in September of two thousand seventeen, the fins were still on the windmill. On October seventeenth, resolution seventeen nineteen, authorizing city staff to remove the windmill and pursue allocation for a new windmill, was adopted by city council. We went out, public work staff went out and removed the fins and other features that presented a safety concern and with the intent to demolish the structure at a later date. But we wanted to take care of maybe safety, immediate safety concerns. As we were doing that, there was a lot of public concern expressed and then there was some council discussion regarding restoring the windmill versus demolishing it and building a new one in a different location. Clean water facility structures are now nearing completion and we're able to see, giving us the ability to see that relationship between the new buildings and the windmill. It was very hard to picture that looking at a flat piece of paper and lines on that We've got some demolition of other structures in the project area that will occur in the next month or so. If we're going to demolish the windmill, this might be the time to do it. However, due to public concern and past city council discussion about restoring the windmill, we'd just like to get some head nods if that's really the direction you wish us to go or if we need to hold off and, and have further discussion about that. So some considerations in restoring it, it's, it's not going to be a simple thing, I don't, I don't believe. I think this has all the makings of being another passive sewer vault where you start out with the best of intentions and every time you think you've got it under control, something else happens and you need to spend more money. So I have, I have talked with development services, the structure will need to be brought into compliance with current codes and that will require the services of a licensed engineer. The structure must also be modified, if we're going to keep it, at that location. It must be modified so that the entry is above the recently adopted flint plane elevation. So we're going to have to raise the level of the floor and the, the entrance. And we have not identified funding for any of the repairs or modifications. That would have to come out of, assuming the general fund budget or Patricia can find some other fund. We have money, Hank has identified some money in the two thousand eighteen parks budget where we can fund the demolition or we can hire an engineer to look at what it would take to restore it and bring it up to, to code compliant. We can't do both. We've got enough money in our budget to, to do one or the other. We don't know what the cost or funding of any repairs, retrofit or, or improvements at this time, we just don't know. And we don't know what the cost and funding would be for constructing a new windmill at a different location in the future. So what I'm looking for from council is just some thoughts on, do we demo it in the next month or do you want us to wait?
I see Councilman Servidius has his hand up already.
I'll cut to the chase. I say demo it, but I'll tell you why. I went back just researching the history on this, trying to get my head around what I thought I remembered and, and backing it up with agenda bills. So we started in January of twenty, was it fifteen or sixteen with the community advisory group? I typed sixteen in my notes.
That would have been sixteen.
Okay. So that group met five times. They talked about what are the most important elements that we want in the park, what's important, what's not important. On June of two thousand sixteen, June seventh, two thousand sixteen, we passed, as you referenced, resolution sixteen fifteen, adopting Windjammer Park Plan. And one of the first things that we talked about in that plan is the relocation of the windmill, preferably to a grand entrance if we could, whether it's a roundabout or something else. So we've talked about removing this windmill for over two years. A couple of bullet points further down, we talked about one of the other requirements of the Windjammer Park Improvement Plan was a stage area that, that could, these are the words that we typed, include or host a myriad of events and the stage can accommodate large music, dance and theatrical performances. Then, on November of that year, we authorized an amendment, number sixteen to Corolo Engineers, for nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, well, round up, nine seventy, nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars to design this park that doesn't include the windmill sitting there. On October of the following year, we passed, as you just referenced, resolution seventeen nineteen, authorizing staff to remove the windmill. I was not there, but I went back and watched the video, so I was familiar with everyone's comments. That passed unanimously. After a couple of blades came down the following month or so, there were some comments online and that created a reaction. Now, if I reacted every time somebody posted a comment on Facebook or the would-be news times, any kind of comment, pro, I mean, that just doesn't make sense. So we've been working through this process. We spent almost a million dollars just to design a park, not to mention all of the community involvement that's gone around. I'm, I'm not, I'm for relocating, not, it doesn't make sense, I don't think economically, to relocate that windmill, but to look at putting up a windmill if we determine the community really wants a windmill somewhere, identified locations or possibly Flintstone Park, which I think could be a pretty interesting icon in that, that park. Or if we eventually, sorry, when we eventually relocate the ball fields. I envision that being a good spot too and maybe an arts park in there with different pieces of artwork. So we've already, we passed this almost a year ago, the resolution to authorize staff to do this. And where it sits right now is at the confluence of the plaza, the promenade or the esplanade, whatever you call that, where all the shops could go and hopefully eventually a big, you know, it, it opens up to an amphitheater-ish area, so that's all I have to say. I mean, and truly, I've been approached by a lot of people over, since, there was some uproar and I've heard from a lot more folks that would rather have what they think they were promised in a park, that are upset about the windmill being moved, removed or relocated. So I'm erring on the side of what I've heard more of, which is, I want the park I was promised with all the amenities.
Other comments? Councilman Wiester.
I too have been listening and, and quite frankly, I'm getting the opposite, you know, I am hearing, not just from a few people who are, you know, vocal, but, but from some concerned citizens. It has been our icon, right? It's, it's been on the front page of, of, you know, every advertisement that's about Old Carver, you know, Bud Zilstra, who built it, just recently passed away at the age of ninety-four, if I'm not mistaken. It's his construction company that built it. You know, lots of fond memories for me. I learned to swim down in, in City Beach Park in that lagoon, back when the lifeguards worked out of that, is their, their lifeguard shack. You know, I, I'm going to, I'm going to side with the, the rest of the council because I, I do have some, you know, personal feelings about this, you know, having, having lived my entire life here and, and my entire life with that, that windmill. I, I do feel to Old Carver's like the, the steam clock to Vancouver, right? You know, steam clock's not still a steam clock up there, but it's still there and they've made it so it works on something other than steam. Still looks like a steam clock, but I guess I do have one question for you, Ms. Rosen, or for Hank. What, what kind of money are we talking about to do the engineer study to determine the cost to rehab this?
Well, I haven't really sat down and penciled it out, but looking at what other recent projects where we've had to have a structural engineer come in and analyze something that is in existence and make upgrades to it, I would say twenty thousand would probably be a good number.
For, for just the analysis, then from there, we then have to come up with designs, plans, submit those plans, then implement those plans. And if the, the window stayed in its current location, from what I understand, we've got some fill going in around the area, we could balance that, because it's cinder block construction at the base, we could balance that fill by bringing up the interior floor, I'm assuming, so that we have...
The, the fill, you know, for all these years, we've had a lot of fill, I'm going to add fill. And so the, within phase one of Windjammer, we've always considered the windmill as a future movement. What drove this discussion was the arm, so we've always intended to grade around it and grade to it, so we, A, don't have a lot of fill to fill it up with and you wouldn't want to get a foot or two there. And we're talking about that first floor or two where the windmill level is, is on six or eight feet, as tall as I am. So for us to structurally get that wall up, the problem is the lower wall is just cinder blocks, not reinforced, and that's where we get into the structural code, the seismic issues with it, this built in the seventies, I think. And so structurally, we would be putting a whole different base to deal with it.
How, how high does the door have to come up for, for floodplain?
Floodplain elevation up there is thirteen and the floor sits about eleven right now.
About two feet.
Yeah.
Is that about a quote, you know, you mentioned a lot of fill in there, but I'm assuming less than two feet of fill?
Yeah, we could, you know, we could ramp it up with the sidewalk or something to make that happen. To me, it's more of a question of, we start looking at floodproofing and dealing with the structural base of that. That's, it will be a real can of worms because I know it's not reinforced.
And, and have we done any preliminary gut check, rough numbers for what it would cost to rebuild a, a structure like that?
Not the entire structure. Hank got an estimate to put new fins on it and a new balcony and...
And decking.
And decking. That was over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just for that part of it.
Problem is, if we try to replace the decking, the inside of it is just two by twelves plywood, so there's not much left.
Yes, it's, it could turn into an ongoing, with us coming back asking for more money. That wasn't, that was not a comfortable thing on the passing of all projects.
Well, and I totally respect that we've all learned from that, and I appreciate that very, very, very much. Again, I think I'm going to side with the rest of the council as to whether I shake my head or nod my head to what you're asking of us. I think, to me, it has a lot of personal meaning, and I don't want that to get in the way of what becomes an intelligent decision for the city, so that's my, my true sense.
Councilman Larson, I believe, you can hear him.
No.
I'm right with Larson. Hey, Councilman Servadius.
So, you know, if, well, I guess, you don't have a lot of input there, how much input do you need? And I just want to append to the conversation, you know, I think Habitat for Humanity, they're able to take community volunteers and build houses, and I see this as one of those iconic things, and it's important to do some kind of a barn-raising effort, and I know there's liability in some of that stuff, but it could really be neat, we have the plans, I believe, Hank, or we certainly
Yes, we have.
You could fabricate plans based on that pictures and that basic design, if we wanted to look as close as possible to what it looks like. But I think it'd be a neat experience for, really, a barn-raising effort, to come back together as a community and say, we have a, you know, a location that makes sense, it's still possibly, probably on the waterfront there somewhere, and let's build it that'll, with the most modern materials, that will stand another 50 years, hopefully, so that's my thoughts.
So, we do have a resolution that authorized us to remove it, so unless we hear differently, that will be what we're going to do, and it will happen soon.
Councilman Wiesner.
Yes, I agree. I concur. You know, I, it is sad because it did, you know, bring out a lot of emotions, I think, in citizens that have a personal relationship to it, and I'm the opposite, I haven't been here that long, so I don't have that strong connection to it. It is beautiful, and it has been, like you said, in a lot of pictures and a lot of, you know, beautiful things for our city and meaning, so I'd like to see it somewhere, and I'd like to see a new location for it identified. I, you know, I like some of the ideas Flintstone or where the ball fields are now, because it is, it is really neat, and I'd like to see it replicated somewhere. But I would also like to value the plans that we have and the public's plan for that park, and what we're doing now, and what we've worked really hard as a council to move forward with building today, even moving further and building new buildings, and listening to the plans of the different pavilions and stages, so I have a high value for that, too. So, I'm okay with removing it and moving on to find a great spot for it and rebuilding it.
I have a question for Mr. Hank Nyam. Shorty DeJean, I believe, laid the bricks for that. He was part of the community project to build that windmill. Is there anyone else besides him in town that actually helped with that construction that we might be able, or I would volunteer to contact to get stories from, so that when we do a new one, we would have some of how they did it, I mean, just history on it that could go with the new windmill, any chance?
The only name that I was familiar with was Bud Zilstra and his brother, and I would imagine his brother has passed away also, which was your uncle, right? But we can do a little research, there was a plaque on the windmill, and there's names on there of the original donors and that kind of thing, so we could do some research. Come up with some additional names.
And that would be something that the plaque we could save to put on the next one. I don't think they found a, what do you call it? When you bury the box, you put
Oh, like a time capsule?
Time capsule in it, I don't believe. Or, I mean, I think they kind of looked inside if there was anything carved or anything like that, but the plaque we could save and then remount it. I think that may be the only historical type of thing.
And the plaque is very hard to read, it's in very bad shape. Do the best we can with it.
Well, I'm not saying it's perfect, but it could go with it. It's still part of history, or maybe being able to reproduce it.
I believe Hank's mother had something to do with bringing the plans from Holland, the original plans.
Yeah, they, the plans were actually sent to Old Carver from relatives. It's a little bit of time.
All right. Councilman Wiesner.
If we, assuming that we're proceeding with giving you the nod, right, how, what type of timeline would you be looking at before demolition would start?
I would say it will be gone by the end of August.
So, let's just put out there two weeks. I guess what I want to put out there to those folks who may end up being upset about this, you got two weeks, put your money where your mouth is. I mean, the reality is, this is a financial decision we're having to make. If there is a community group out there that feels so strongly that we're making the wrong decision here today, I'll challenge them, you know, come to us with an alternative. Come to us with a way to pay, to save it, you know, and, you know, obviously, I think that would maybe change some of our opinions, I don't know that all of us, but I just want to put that challenge out there, you know, get the word out. They can certainly rally around the old windmill if that's what they'd like.
Councilman Larson.
I did have my hand up this time.
Good, good.
Yeah, I actually would like to weigh in on this, and I understand and I respect the history of it and those that have contributed to it, and the feelings that people have around it. It is an icon, it is our most recognizable landmark, if you will. But I believe this council, well, not this council, the council that was embodied in 2017, and the mayor came to decisions, and those decisions were enacted upon, and we've talked about it some more, and I think what we're saying, at least what I'd like to see is act upon this. We do have a plan in place that doesn't include the windmill, and I would invite those people who think we're making a mistake here to have their voices heard, but maybe get your name on the new plaque, because I do believe we should get a new windmill constructed and placed in an appropriate place. But it's time to let the old one go, and if there is a movement that says this is really wrong, then let's help make it right, and you can help us get the new one built and placed somewhere. Thank you.
Councilman Servadius.
Thank you for those comments with all due respect. Mr. Wiesner, I just want to step in here, because staff, almost a year ago, we gave them instruction. By not giving them a different opinion, we just gave them instruction. You just spoke up and said, if the community speaks up loudly enough, we might, no, we don't reconsider at this point. We are giving them instructions, the wheels start cranking the second they stand up from this table, to take the windmill down. So, if there is a community group that is very interested in the replication of the windmill, I think we should work with them to find a new spot and get their name on the plaque, but I don't want to have this conversation again in two or three weeks. I mean, I just, I want staff to have very clear instruction, I'm worried there might be a conflicting message in what you just said.
Well, again, I think I've said that I'm going to side with the rest of the nods or not nods, but I also feel as though it is such an icon, that there has been, in the past, last minute, you know, hurrahs in other towns to save such items. If there was a group out there that felt as though he could do it, I certainly wouldn't want to not listen to that last-minute effort, understanding it would be a last-minute effort, that this has been discussed for a year. I am siding with the rest of the council, again, because of the fact, the history, that you are correct, the other council, previous council had looked at this, they discussed it, they made a decision out of respect for them, I'm certainly willing to go against my personal feelings and try and do what's right for the community. At the same time, doing what's right for the community does sometimes mean that we do have to have those last-minute folks come in, and I just wanted to make sure I was perfectly clear in that, you know, this is it, you know, we've been discussing this for a year, put up, or, you know, we're moving on, and I just want to make sure that those people who do listen to these meetings understand that, at least I'm willing certainly, to listen to what they would have to say if there was a last-minute effort. I certainly am not expecting, in a couple of weeks, for a group to be able to get together, put together the money, but I did feel as though it had to go out there, because this is, this is it, right? And we are done discussing it, and unless we get approached with some other plan, and I would like to think that we would all listen to that other plan rather than dismiss it, if in fact it came before us.
Councilman Wiesner, I understand, and I think we've had the last-minute effort already out there, but it's a domino effect. If someone comes up and says, hey, I've got this, they've got, you know, the grading, the, when you demolition, you kind of have certain things that you're going to demo at the same time, and the haul-out, that if they were to come at the next meeting, then it's really going to cost us money, I'm predicting. So, I appreciate your sentiment, but we've had this in plan, and I think, let's put that energy towards the new one. I think the false idea that we would suddenly rip back in two weeks at the next meeting, council meeting, if someone were to come up, then staff time that has been planning and coordinating it, so we don't have any more unexpected cost, and this comes up, then you're like taking the rug and going, whoop. So, I think if there is a group, they need to get behind the new one and figure that out and the money, and to get it done sooner than later. I don't mean to prop your idea or your enthusiasm, I think we've kind of had the last minute, maybe we haven't been jumping up and down and saying that. So, but I think they need to get behind the new one, because if they were going to come and then demand that, hey, we think we've got the money, we've upset the site plan and the working of getting it all done on time, on a certain way. So, I think that's a little premature to say that we could rip the rug out and start all over as far as that goes, if I'm not mistaken, on the work schedule. Usually, from four to five, council, we have our time, but we still have quite a few items, so can we forego council extra things to get through? We have the affordable housing, but we're behind on our thing. If that's all right with you all, please, to get through it? I know we have the clean water, Navy, but we also have affordable housing, and then we have back about the purchase order, so it's all right to use our time to finish up our workshop business today? Head nods?
All right. This one, I don't think will be controversial. We have received, called a request for quotations from the Navy to update some information that we provided them in 2013 and put that into a rate. In March of 2013, we provided an estimate to the Navy for them to join our clean water facility, and that estimate included a share of the treatment plant cost, a share of the outfall, a share of the conveyance system improvements to get their flow from the seaplane base to the new facility, as well as operations and maintenance. In January 2014, the Navy sent us a letter saying that they couldn't provide a firm commitment to us at that time, and then in January of 2014, City Council adopted Resolution 1405, which directed staff to proceed with the design of the new wastewater treatment plant without considering flows from the seaplane base. So, that is what we have now, we have a design that does not consider flows from the Navy base. The Navy is looking now at their long-term alternatives for treating wastewater generated on the seaplane base, and one of those alternatives, they're looking at four different ones, one of them is connecting to our new facility. They issued this request for quotations, and they ask us to provide revised cost estimates for the conveyance treatment in O and M if the Navy connects, so they want us to update the information we gave them in 2013. And then they've asked us to look at four different alternatives, a rate analysis for four different alternatives. There's actually two different construction alternatives, and then each of those has two different ways that the Navy would fund it. So, the first one is the city would construct all of the conveyance system, including everything on a Navy base that's necessary to get the flow from the seaplane base to our new facility. And the first option under that scenario is they would pay a one-time connection charge and then pay us a rate for wastewater treatment. The other option is we would construct all of that, but instead of paying us a one-time connection charge, they would pay that connection charge amortized over a 20-year period, and then they would pay for wastewater treatment. The second construction alternative is the Navy would construct anything on base property, the city would be responsible for constructing all necessary modifications to our wastewater conveyance collection system, and there will be some of that in order, we're going to have to upsize some lines to take flow from the Navy. The Navy would pay that one-time connection charge plus a rate for wastewater treatment. And then the fourth alternative is they would pay that connection charge over a 20-year period and pay wastewater treatment. Oh, what did I do? I think I turned it off, Tim. Sorry.
Hit the play button.
Hit the play button. Oh, there we go, sorry.
Turned it off.
So, some considerations, we will need to issue bonds, this says bonds, but in talking to Patricia, we will need some sort of outside funding for the conveyance system improvements. That can either be bonds, it may be SRF loans. I learned yesterday that the state legislature has approved funding for the Public Works Trust Fund again, yay, but we will need outside funding. We're looking at developing some sort of an administrative fee, because we are going to have to manage some consultants in preparing this rate analysis, we're going to need assistance from outside firms. Right now, we have a proposal from HDR, who has done the rate analysis for the city for all of our utilities, so they're familiar with what the costs are of the treatment plant. We'll need some help from Corolla, because they'll be able to tell us what the impacts to our treatment plant is, what would be necessary if we need more membranes installed now to take Navy flow, and what the impact would be to our future capacity, because we didn't design for Navy flow. So, there will be some sort of impact to our capacity. We'll need some financial expertise through PFM, which has handled our bonding in the past, and possibly bond counsel. If they were to come and connect to our new clean water facility, that has the potential to reduce our sewer rates fairly substantially to our existing sewer customers, so there is a really positive outcome of this, if it works. However, there is another side to that, is we would be giving up capacity for future city growth, and Corolla will be able to tell us how much that is, but that's also based on current technology. It may be that membrane technology changes over the years to be much more efficient, and maybe we don't lose that capacity as we go into the future. So, we're preparing this response to the Navy RFQ, and we'll be presenting that probably to the council at the second meeting in August for authorization to submit that to the Navy. If they agree to this proposal, and this proposal is only to prepare the rate analysis, if they agree to that, then we'll have an agreement between the Navy and the city for this rate analysis, and then we'll be bringing forward consultant contracts with HDR, possibly PFM, and and perhaps bond counsel, so that we can give, provide the deliverables that, that this would require. Any questions?
Councilman Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So it says here in the request for quotations, the Navy has asked the city to provide cost and rate information for these four alternatives. And we went through one alpha and bravo, two alpha and bravo. We, if we give them all four of those, let's say we have a preference and they have a different preference. How is that working out? Because I, I can see for me, as I'm looking at this, I have a couple of clear preferences.
Yes, we, we like, we like, we like two, two A.
Yeah, well, yeah. One A and B, I, I don't, I don't see any benefit to us doing construction on Navy property at all. So that is my question is do we have some latitude in saying, you know, we would rather not do it according to one alpha and bravo? And we'll give you a rate quote based on the second two options?
Well, I, I think that we can, but I also think we need to try to find some balance because we need to look at how, how important is it to have the possibility of reducing the rates to all of our other customers versus how much risk are we willing to take to construct something on Navy property and own and maintain it?
And from the financial side of it, the part of having DFM involved and some of the other ones, what debt capacity can we handle? I mean, if we take on this added debt, what does that look like for us? What does that do to the Navy's rate? Is that covered all through the rate or, I mean, that's the concern I have. That's why I really think if we do go that, down that path, it's important to get those extra contracts approved.
And what benefit would we possibly gain from a 20-year amortized loan that is payable to us as opposed to that one-time upfront payment for what we are initially outlaying?
Again, that benefit would be reduction in rates to our other customers. So what is the value of that? We're trying to find a balance.
And there's a balance. So you look at the cost we budget every year for our treatment plant, both the good service and operations cost. Right now, we're running about, I call them ADUs, 9,000 ADUs in the city. That cost spread out over those 9,000, and all of a sudden you spread that out over 12,000 ADUs. The math on the, on the rate is very substantial. To me, it's very much a win-win situation to find something that works.
As long as our capacity is there for the other.
Yeah, I can say there's, there's issues for debt and, and, but so, you know, to me, it's a very win-win situation that, you know. Yeah, you're right. And then there's a lot of things, their systems, no. If we take over their systems, their system is so bad, maybe they need new ones because they leak so bad, you know? And there may be.
So I think there's, there's probably a way, and I, I think Sean Corn would be able to help us with this. If there are options that we feel are riskier to the citizens here, such as building something on the Navy base and amortizing it over 20 years. I think it's possible to build that, to accommodate that risk in the rate that we propose to them.
Councilman Servadius.
You, I think you're explaining this, but I don't know if I caught it. So in this rate analysis upfront, someone has to do this. Who's paying for it?
Well, so the, this request for quotations is for us to give the Navy a cost proposal to actually prepare the rate analysis. So we would, if, if they're in agreement with that, with our proposal, they, we would enter into an agreement with the Navy and we would be reimbursed for those costs.
Got it. And so the only ancillary thought I would have is while it seems, obviously, we want to have the pant, the plant operating efficiently, not necessarily at capacity because we need room for growth. The temptation, especially politically, might be able to say, hey, we lowered your rates because we went from 9,000 ADUs to 12. But not, you're looking at costs, conveyance, O and M. I don't know what the term would be, but basically accelerating depreciation or use of this asset. We call it a 50, 60-year asset. I don't want to take that asset and turn it into a 30- or 40-year asset and have someone, it wouldn't be my time on council, but someone's going to be sitting here going, oops. Yeah, we lowered the rates a little bit, but we handicapped the ability for future growth and we significantly accelerated this asset because we didn't design it based on what we knew. So I just want to make sure somehow those guys, Sean Corn, and they're, these rates. But somehow we try and factor those decision-making points into this process.
That's the Corolla participation in it.
Any other questions?
There's still a little air漏s deep.
In case you're wondering, I was calling.
Kathy, are your legs going to wake up? You're sitting there in a hot seat. Thank you very much.
We'll be done. We've got one more.
All right. So Development Services Department item for this afternoon is one of the Affordable Housing Task Force recommendations that our associate planner Ray Lindenberg has been working on for a few months now with the Planning Commission. And I'll let Ray walk you through a PowerPoint presentation that'll give you some background on this item, the work that he and the commission have done, and what their recommendation is to you. So Ray, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and members of the city council. I'm going to go through and try not to read directly off of the PowerPoint presentation as you're not supposed to do. But there is a lot of information there. And there's also a lot of information in your packet that I want to make you aware of as well. We did go through a public outreach process where we had a number of questions in a survey prepared for the public to respond to. So there's a lot of information in there too. I encourage you to review that. So just as a bit of background here, the Affordable Housing Task Force put forth the 40 recommendations that we're all familiar with. And one of those was to make changes to our accelerated accessory dwelling unit ordinance to make it a little bit easier or to encourage the development of the accessory dwelling units. The process that we've gone through here, you can kind of see the grayed out ones that have already been done. We went through a staff research. We did some discussion, several Planning Commission hearings and meetings. We did the public outreach and survey. And then we applied some revisions and changes and presented the draft ordinance to the Planning Commission. And then now we're here at the city council workshop to discuss a little bit. And then we'll go on to a city council hearing at a later date. First off was the staff research there. Number eight on the list of, of items that the task force had for us was to make specific changes, immediate change to the ordinance to eliminate barriers and encourage ADUs. And two of those things were to eliminate the occupancy restrictions and remove any parking requirements. So the occupancy restrictions that are specifically mentioned there refer to the, essentially that the property owner has to live on-site if you have an ADU for at least six months out of the year. And then the text also requires that one additional off-street parking space be provided for each accessory dwelling unit. Now, there's some pros and cons, and these are some of the things that we discussed as staff and then discussed with the Planning Commission through those several meetings. For eliminating the residency restrictions, we see a couple of pros there. It allows for more flexibility for the property owners. If somebody is a snowbird or a Navy person, they could possibly rent out their home while still renting out that ADU. That would be a pro of removing that restriction. The removal of that requirement could also reduce a psychological barrier to an ADU. Perhaps people see this long list of requirements in our code and say, that's just too much. I don't want to deal with it. Some of the cons include creating less oversight within a neighborhood. If you have problem tenants and you have then two property or two homes on a property, maybe that doubles the problem, maybe not. We're not really sure what might happen in that situation. And then future property owners may not be familiar with the regulations because there's nothing that goes along with the sale of the house that says you need to do A, B, and C in order to maintain this ADU. Now, when we went through and did some research, we picked out 11 similar cities, similar jurisdictions in the state of Washington, and looked at some of the comparison of what our code allows for and what their codes allow for. You can see there that down the right-hand, bottom right-hand corner, the ones that are in kind of that orange color are more restrictive than the city of Oak Harbor. The white are all the same, and then green is less restrictive. So you can see there that most of the cities shown on there do have a owner occupancy requirement as part of their ADU code. Now, the parking requirements, that brings up a whole nother issue, a whole nother list of issues. Some of the pros there, that reduced parking will allow for better fit with our low-impact development. If you don't have to pave a new parking space, then, then you can eas, more easily meet the LID requirements. Not requiring an additional parking space may reduce the overall cost. You don't have to pay for that parking space, then that might reduce the cost of your, your development of that ADU. Cons, all residential units are currently required to provide parking spaces in the city. For any single-family or multifamily home, you're required to provide parking for that unit. And this would be a complete diversion from what our code usually requires. And then also the parking in the public right-of-way might become congested. Right now, we don't have limitations on how long people can park in the street. So sometimes they just use the street parking to store their vehicles. It might create a situation in some neighborhoods where we have too much street parking, or I should say not enough street parking, too much congestion. Again, going back to that list of what other cities require, it's unanimous. They all require at least one parking space for an ADU unit. So we did, when we went through the, the code originally, at the very beginning of this process, we determined that there were a couple of housekeeping items that needed to be taken care of. There's a reference to the need for a conditional use permit, which is not the case. So we want to get rid of that. And then there's a subjective requirement for additional parking, quote, as deemed necessary, which we felt was a little bit problematic from a legal standpoint. And then there is a discussion amongst us and amongst the Planning Commissioners about the ADUs as an affordable housing and how much they actually cost. Now, if you construct an ADU of its own unit, a detached structure, the cost of that ADU is going to be significant. If you're converting the inside of a house, an existing bedroom or garage or something like that, the, the cost could be less, but there is definitely a cost involved in that. So the question is, is the affordable unit, is the ADU itself affordable? Or does it just contribute to a larger pool of available units that may be able to stem the rise of the cost in the city overall? We feel the Oak, the Oak Harbor code is actually well-positioned as it is because it's fairly permissive in some of the ways that ADUs might be considered. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. So the, the flexibility that we have there, as you can see, there are some of those more restrictive and less restrictive code requirements. But as you go across the top in the Oak Harbor category there, you can see that we don't have any minimum square footage requirement, which doesn't really matter as far as what can be allowed, but we don't have a maximum either. A lot of cities say that you can't have more than 800 or 1,000 square feet or a percentage of your existing home. What our code says is if you have a 2,000-square-foot home, you could put a 3,000-square-foot ADU in the backyard if you wanted to. If it meets the setbacks, if it meets the lot coverage requirements, we don't have a limit. So we feel that that is one of the ways that our code is actually well-suited to allow for more housing to be created in the city. And maybe that's one of those things that lowers the, the overall tide, if you will, of increasing costs. And then we don't have a maximum for bedrooms either. Some of those are restricted to two bedrooms or one bedroom to kind of keep the size of that ADU down to become more of a secondary-type unit. So when we went through the Planning Commission, we met three separate times, had three separate public meetings. We did have the public hearing more recently. But there is specific discussion at the, each of those meetings. I want to kind of run you through the, the background there. On that first meeting, we obviously had the background presentation discussion. What is it we're talking about doing? How are we going to do it? We had the specific recommendations from the task force. And then we asked them to discuss as a group and provide any information or questions that they wanted to staff. And then we would be able to go back and research some of that. That second meeting in March, we responded to some of the items that were brought up by the Planning Commission. That pros and cons list was developed for that meeting. And then the, the detailed discussion whether or not an ADU is affordable housing in and of itself. And then that kind of diverged off into what a tiny home is and if RVs could be used for these types of units. And we kind of wanted to separate those out because they're, they're a separate type of, of unit, a separate type of issue. And so what we determined is that our ADU code should only deal with those, those units that can be built under the building code. And that's what our code says, that the, the ADU has to be built to the standards of the building code. And that's something we feel is important. What effects change, changing the parking requirements might have on neighborhoods and what that street parking might cause as far as issues or problems down the road? Are there other barriers that ADU development is not being considered, that we're not considering right now? So moving on towards April 24th, we had a kind of a further refining and discussion. Cities of similar size, that chart that I showed you, there are some questions on that. Were, are those cities truly similar to us? Is it just size? Well, we determined that all of them were NPDES Phase II permit holders. So that makes a big difference as far as the LID construction and those sorts of issues are concerned. Discussion of similarities and differences between the codes. And then at that meeting, I also had a kind of kickoff to our public outreach and our survey. We included the, the web link to go to that survey and encourage people to take part in that survey. So on April 20th, this flyer went out in the utility bill for everybody. And then we also posted the same notice on Facebook to kind of get, generate some interest in that Survey Monkey, Survey Monkey survey. And we got about, I think it was 97 people responded to that. So we feel pretty good about the turnout with that. We had several categories of survey questions, kind of a background identifying awareness and then questions related to the task force recommendations. And then a couple of follow-ups that went along with that. Number one, were you aware that accessory dwelling units were allowed within the city? No, 79%. So there is also, I think, a key issue here is education. That if people don't know they can do something, maybe that's why they're not doing it. And this goes back to that conversation that we had at the Planning Commission level of, are there any other things that are causing people to not want to build ADUs? Is it truly our regulations or is it something else? Interest in ADU construction, would you be interested in constructing an ADU on your property? And that one was split. And that's not to say that 49% of people are going to build one, but 49% of people might be interested depending on the circumstances. If you answered yes, and there are a lot of these if you answered and you kind of follow through. But what would be your reason for building an ADU on your property? And a lot of people said it would provide additional income or additional space for a family member who's living somewhere else, or just additional housing for the community. And I, again, encourage you to take a look at the, the attachment to this Planning Commission, or excuse me, the, the city council memo here that we have. There are a lot of comments that go along with these too because we asked for a separate comment list on those. So I didn't want to go through and bore you with, with all the details on that, but they are in there if you want to take a look. If you answered no on question two, why would you not be interested in constructing an ADU? 41% say there's just simply not room. Some people live in a condo or an HOA that doesn't allow for it, or they're just not interested. 3.92, 4% of people said the construction cost is too high, which is kind of surprising. And then 41% said other. Please specify, and that's again in those comments if you want to take a look at those. This question, would you support your neighbor constructing an accessory dwelling unit on their property? 40% of people said I would have no problem with that as long as it's built to the standards that we have. And as an aside here, we did put a copy of our ADU ordinance before, a link to that, before the, the actual questions started. So if people wanted to look at the actual code, they could review it and then go through and answer these questions. So they should be at least a little bit by this time educated in what the ADU ordinance allows for. Another 9% said if it was allowed, or if it was limited to a certain number of bedrooms, they'd be fine with it. 27% of people said, no, I moved to a single-family neighborhood with the expectation that stay that way. So that's kind of the other end of that spectrum there. Current accessory dwelling unit regulations require at least one parking space. Now, this is diving into the, the recommendations, the Affordable Housing Task Force. 28% of people said having a parking space specifically for the ADU will ensure that there's always that space available for the resident. And I think that's important to point out is that, you know, if you don't have that space reserved for the ADU person, if you have a neighborhood that has a lot of on-street parking, the ADU might not have a place to park, or the, the resident of the ADU. 18, 19% of people said there's, there's not enough street parking, so this requirement is necessary. That's going to be wholly dependent on where you live. There's plenty of street parking in some neighborhoods and not much. There's plenty of street parking in some neighborhoods and not much in others. Another 19% said there's plenty of street parking and this requirement is not necessary. So, again, there's a split there, and it really depends on where you live and what your neighborhood looks like. How important is it that the ADU ordinance require an off-street parking space? And 64% of people thought it was at least somewhat important. So, we feel that this is a pretty good indication that people are concerned about parking in their neighborhoods and parking for any additional units in their neighborhood. Moving into the onsite ownership issue, current regulations require that the owner live onsite for at least three, six months of the year. What is your opinion of that requirement? That one was kind of evenly split, people saying that the requirement eliminates flexibility, which, you know, is true. The requirement prevents absentee landlords from having two rentals on one property, also true. I mean, these were kind of split and perhaps not the best wording to this one. But, again, with the comments that follow, I think there is some information just definitely to be taken out of there. The more important thing on this one, I think, is that, again, a large chunk of people feel it's very important that the property owner live onsite. A recorded covenant, current regulations specify that property owners sign a recorded covenant stating that they will live onsite. Again, a variety of responses there, people saying that ensures that future property owners are aware of the regulations. Also, that reinforces the requirements, ensures that current property owner is aware of them. A lesser percentage saying that buyers should be responsible for determining regulations in effect for themselves. And it serves as a psychological barrier, those were lesser answers on there. So, the recorded covenant, again, about 65% of people thinking it's very important that we have the covenant recorded with an ADU. So, size requirements, this wasn't something that was brought up in the task force recommendations, but we wanted to kind of gauge the attitude of people in the community, see if there were any concerns about that. 36% of people say that it allows the property owner the flexibility to build what they want on their property. 30% of people say it may allow for large buildings or a building that would be out of scale with the neighborhood. So, again, there's that split. If people think that there's a good reason to have a larger building or not have a requirement for, or maximum for a size of a square footage of an ADU. So, out of this, our conclusions, majority not aware of the ADU regulations existing. There is interest in constructing an ADU. There's measured support for the construction of an ADU on a neighboring parcel. You know, it's always widely depending, are they going to shade my property? Is there going to be privacy issues? So, there's kind of that measured support there. But we feel there is broad support for both keeping the parking space requirement and keeping the ownership requirement. And also, support for keeping the covenant requirement on the books. So, something that I think came out of our discussions with the planning commission and from the survey is there's kind of philosophical conflict here. People are concerned about the character of their neighborhoods. They're concerned about parking and storage of vehicles. They're concerned about having their own bedroom. They like to have their space and their privacy. And then the concept of having a quote-unquote "single-family neighborhood" and staying that way. Well, on the other side of that line there, there's government regulation. They're concerned about having too many rules and the enforcement of existing rules and the desire for flexibility. So, there's kind of a fine line that we need to walk there with our existing regulations and with any changes that we do make there. Some other considerations that we thought of while we were going through this process, the demand and interest in construction. Since 2004, 14 years, three have been permitted and built, and two of those were in 2004. There's not a lot of demand. And that's not to say that there's not always going to be that level of demand, but that's just out there. Are impediments created by the code? What effect do those regulations have on construction? We're not entirely certain what the issue is, why people aren't building them, if there's not demand, or if there's just not interest, or what have you. And then ADU, again, is affordable housing. ADU may be better considered simply as a unit to stem the tide, rising tide of costs overall, rather than an affordable unit by itself. So, our conclusion, when we went before planning commission, was we have the task force recommend and changes to remove the parking requirement, not require the property owners to live onsite, and require a covenant to be recorded. Our research showed that those above items are fairly typical. Those three items are pretty consistent throughout most ADU codes in similar jurisdictions. There was not a strong consensus with the planning commission to make changes immediately. Survey indicates support for keeping the three items that are mentioned above there. And the survey shows a wide range of opinions when discussing ADUs and the regulations. The existing code, well-functional, does need a few minor changes. And we have proposed those changes as part of our conclusion. So, before the planning commission on May 22nd, we had a public hearing. We gave them the results of the survey and the discussion, and had a discussion of the draft ordinance. The results of the online survey seem to counter what the recommendations of the task force are. There's no other way to say it. The opinion of the planning commission seems to mirror those survey results. And based on the research, survey, and extension of discussion with the planning commission, that we recommend that they make, that there may be some minor housekeeping changes, but not to make the revisions that were requested by the task force. At that meeting, the planning commission agreed with that and forwarded on a positive recommendation to the city council. So, here we are, back to the, that checklist of, or that timeline of where we're at. We just have the city council hearing to make the final determination on what we want to do with the code. But, again, our recommendation is to remove a portion of one section, making the parking requirement one space and no more. That was the one that said "as deemed necessary", we felt was a little problematic. Removal of reference to conditional use permit. And then the removal of Section 1942-070, which refers to registration of non-conforming units because those were non-conforming after a year of original adoption of the code, which has long since passed. So, pretty much what we have here are housekeeping items to clean it up, make it a little bit more simple and easy to understand. Yep?
So, one of the things that we don't have a way to tell the council is how many illegal ADUs might be out there. I mean, we all know that they're in our community, in our neighborhoods. Frankly, the only reason that we at the city ever become aware of them is through a complaint process. Usually, it, well, actually it comes up two ways. One, it's some sort of complaint. The second way is when they seek to change some sort of, something associated with that unit that we didn't know anything about, like getting a separate mailing address. It's a ding-ding-ding, the bells and whistles go off, as is trying to get a separate utility account. And then that's how we learn about these. So, the statistic that Ray had was correct in terms of the legally permitted ones. We have a very small number of those. We can't tell you, unfortunately, how many non-permitted units that we have out there, but we certainly know that they exist. Just a little additional information. Thanks, Ray.
Counsel, any questions?
Counselor, yes. On the statistics for the other communities, for those that were maybe considered less restrictive without the parking and the, you know, other requirements, do you know how many they have permitted? Did you ask that, or is it a great number that they currently have in their communities? Or?
Yeah.
Didn't, I don't remember seeing it up there.
It wasn't up there. The, we have an opportunity as planners to occasionally talk to other planners in other jurisdictions. And some of these jurisdictions, I can't remember specifically if there are any on this list, but the ones I remember talking to were Bellingham, which is obviously a way different
Yes.
type of city. And there was one other, I don't recall right now. But the point being is that there's not a huge demand for these in any cities other than the larger cities. Bellingham was having significant demand, Seattle has significant demand. Smaller cities don't seem to do a lot of it. One of the cities that was there, and again, I don't remember who it was, had changed their code back in about 2008 or 2009. And what they'd done is they made it so that it was essentially a trial ordinance, that they would do up to 10 units, and then they would review it to see how it worked. They hadn't reached their 10 units yet. So, there's not a huge demand in smaller cities, I think, just in general. So, I can't say for certain exactly how many were approved by each of those communities, so.
Interestingly, about Bellingham just went through a process to revise their code as well. It's a much hotter topic for that community. And one could imagine, you know, with the university town, there's more of a drive, more of a need for those kinds of units. And what they ended up doing is, if I recall correctly, is that there are some of their neighborhoods where ADUs are allowed. And then there are some neighborhoods where they've determined they're not going to allow them at all. And so, that's an even, a different approach. And not necessarily one that we're advocating, but mostly just to illustrate that it's really sort of community by community in how they are addressing these things. Because they had some who really embraced it and some who said absolutely no way. We don't, that's not who we want to be as a neighborhood.
I can see, I mean, that makes sense, you know. I mean, realistically, I don't, I mean, I
And I think when you have separate distinct neighborhoods of significant size, then you can tailor your ordinance to do those kinds of things. But it was an interesting thing to read about because they had gone through a fairly lengthy, and reading between the lines, a fairly heated process to come to those conclusions.
I'm sure, so if we, if we became Bellingham, if we did loosen our codes and we all of a sudden got an influx of, you know, hundreds of these permit applications or, you know, interest in them, you know, maybe, it probably would become more heated, I could see. You know, it definitely would cause maybe an uproar. And I'm just wondering, if that does happen, you know, what, I would, I would be interested to know what the other options would be, just playing both sides of it. Because I think there is a real need for it, but you also want to protect that 50% of the people that, you know, want their single-family neighborhoods to be single-family neighborhoods, so.
Just maybe as another semi-interesting factoid, Planning Gentry, when they were building the Fairway Point project, explored the concept of offering accessory dwelling unit as part of the house plan that they were offering. And they did proceed, I think they were two of the three that we know about, they were part of that process. And I don't know that it took off for them. But, you know, that's another way that we might see this over time. Again, as the need to keep aging parents in place, that kind of stuff becomes even more prevalent. You know, maybe we will see home builders who want to try to explore that concept, that the ADU is a built-in piece automatically with the brand-new house. And that, I think, you could see being much more acceptable to the neighborhood because it would be integrated into the whole and it wouldn't be viewed perhaps as something that's an add-on later on and changing the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, that might be an interesting phenomenon to keep our eye on to see if that would ever gain popularity.
Oh, in bigger cities that I've lived in before here, there were new neighborhoods and new homes being built that were advertised as having mother-in-law additions built onto the house and their own, you know, living space connected. But, I mean, that was gaining traction, you know, 15 years ago in some of the cities that I've lived in, so I definitely could see that, yeah.
I haven't even known they used to have some units like that.
Interesting.
Counselor, any questions?
Before I get started, we need to extend time.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, good.
Good.
Settle in, settle in. Mr. Power, settle in. I actually see this as a very divided, you know, when you start looking at the, and I appreciate the time that you guys took to put this survey out. I must say that. This is great that we have this input, but I see this as pretty divided. I really see this as a 50/50 issue. You really analyze some of this stuff, mainly when it comes to the covenant. I'm certainly, certainly willing to give on the parking concerns. I get that, and I think overwhelmingly, the parking concerns kind of stand out throughout this entire survey. The people who did have a concern with an ADA, a lot of, ADU, a lot of them was because of the parking issue. So, I think if you take the parking issue out of this and relook at some of the these figures here, it really is a 50/50 split. And it's even a 50/50 split almost on the covenant required. You've got 11 cities up there, six of them requiring a covenant and five of them not requiring a covenant. So, this is, I see this as a down-the-middle thing, quite honestly, and not quite as cut and dried as what is being presented. I would agree with you, Mr. Power, is that there are unpermitted ADUs out there. And part of that may be because of education and the fact that 80% of our constituents didn't realize that there's a permit to be able to do that. But I'm also going to say that we look here, you know, we've got a figure of 33%, but then if we go down to and take out the people who quoted other, and you look at, I'm looking at the survey where it talks about whether or not the regulations requiring the property owner to live on the property for at least six months a year, whether or not that is a deterrent or not. 7.22% said it was a deterrent, and then the 26%. And then if you look at the other of those, 19.59%, there's another 11 comments there that basically indicate that that is a deterrent for them, which is almost, again, a 46% split. We've got 49% of the people saying that they're willing, they'd be interested in building an ADU. And we have 46% of these respondents saying that that restrictive covenant is a negative to them being able to process an ADU, which sounds to me like we're kind of aligning roots here, that we've got a, you know, a totally divided situation. I would say that I feel as though some of the people who answer negatively may have not read that ordinance, you know. You know, I'll face it, we've got 97 people out of how many bills mailed out that actually took the time to take it. And thank you so much for taking that time, those 97 people, we appreciate your input. But, you know, of those 97 people, how many of them actually sat down to read the ordinance? Understand that we do have a limitation of 40% coverage on a given lot. Understand that we've got some references in there to the construction and design that, you know, it tends to be towards the rear of the house. I certainly agree with you that building a standalone ADU is not a real cost efficiency. But I do see where conversions of residences can be a cost efficiency, especially for somebody who is getting on life and maybe that extra space is a priority for them, and this is a way for them to keep their existing home. But then the recovenants, going back to that, I don't know that any of us can figure out what we're going to be doing three years from now. I mean, we'd like to have a plan, but none of us know what's going to come up. And to make an investment of 50, 60, 70, $80,000 into doing a conversion of a portion of the house into the ADU, knowing that if something changed in your life, that may not be able to be recoverable because something may occur, you may have to move elsewhere to take care of a family member or something, then that is a deterrent. I'm going to toss out there, and you guys actually hit on exactly what my thought was, similar to the county. The county has been allowing ADUs without having the owner requirement for years. I realize it's larger property, I get that. And I realize, you know, the fear about having those terrible renters next door is everybody's worst nightmare, but let's face it, we can't control that. And whether or not there's a single bad renter next door, two bad renters next door, I don't know that one is any worse than the other, a bad renter's a bad renter. And let's face it, we can have one in any single-family home just as easy as we can have it in a two-family home. I'm going to suggest that having a number of permits that we're going to allow, even as low as a number of five on a year, would probably address a lot of the concerns of the people who answer to the negative. We would then find probably the skewing less of a 50/50 deal and maybe skewing to the other side when people realize that we're not going to allow a flood into a given neighborhood. It's something we could revisit at a later date. Obviously, if they all get taken up every year, then obviously we can revisit it. And maybe that's a good thing towards our affordable housing. Because I feel as though, when somebody takes a single-family home and splits it into a main home and an ADU, I feel as though if both of those spaces were rented out, that they would both be rented out at lower than market value because you're not renting out a large, single-family home any longer. You've shrunk the family, a single-family home down, and then you've also created this ADU. So, the reality is, you know, we have the potential of getting two-for-one out of each of these towards affordable housing. Five units a year is either going to show that we have created an obstacle in the past and that these 50% of the people who would like to do an ADU really would and have not because of the covenant. Or at the same time, it may show that the reality is we've removed the barriers and there is no demand, and there is no need. I feel as though that there are some illegal I, I feel as though that there are some illegal conversions going on, which is not good. We're not seeing health and safety, we're not, you know, reviewing those to make sure that ingress and egress, out of bedrooms and et cetera. Would some of those people, you know, apply for a permit if, if the, the barrier was removed? I do feel that. The other thing is, I, I've said it before, I tend not to be for ordinances that are not enforceable. How do we enforce the existing covenant? I, I don't know that we have a, a, a measure in place to enforce the existing covenant. Somebody can sign the covenant, it can be recorded against the property, what does that mean? So again, we're, we're penalizing the people who, who do want to follow the law by laying this covenant on them and the people who don't want to follow the law are going to sign the covenant and, and just rent the place out anyhow. So I mean, from, from a moral standpoint, I'm, I'm just against a, a non-enforceable regulation and I realize it's a regulation that we already have on the books that we're not changing anything, but it's, 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 it's a regulation we're not enforcing now and then we really have no way to enforce it. So I'm going to toss out there to the council and I do appreciate the Planning Commission's effort on it. This is a volunteer group that puts a lot of time and effort into, into thinking this stuff through. Typically, I, I would tend to side with the recommendations of, of these advisory groups because they have had time to examine it. But in this case, I, I don't know that we talked about the idea of limiting the number of these permits, which I, I think would address some of these people's concern. And I don't know that we, you know, maybe didn't, you know, can't tweak this a little bit to get to the point where we can determine whether or not we have created an obstacle to a area that could end up creating some more affordable units for us and, and what would five units a, a year do to this city? You know, I, I don't know that it would, it would be a, a terrible detriment and, and at the same time, we'd be able to, you know, test this theory. I think all the cities up there, there's, you had up there probably all have affordable housing issues too. And, and we're not going to fix this problem by just doing the same thing that, that we've been doing. I mean, we're, we're on a trend, we've, we've seen the graphs, you know, it's a pretty steady line heading downward of available housing units and that's causing a, a steady increase in both rental costs and purchase costs and, and people are being cost burdened with their homes. We've, we've seen the statistics provided from the county. One way to relieve that cost burden obviously is to move to a smaller home and another way is to, to augment your income through, through an accessory dwelling unit. So I, I'm just going to toss that out there as, as my two cents. I, I'd really like to, to see us maybe rethink this with, with the proposal of, of limiting, Island County limits to 31 units a year. And there were some years where they maxed that out. I don't think so much now. I think that was more back in '07, '08, that we were finding that those 31 cottage certificates is how they issued them were being used up. So I don't expect a big run on it and I agree with you, Mr. Powers, that we're unclear how many are being created without permits and, and how much of a need there is, but I, I think by leaving the thing the way it is, I, I don't know that we're ever going to find out.
Mr. Powers, if this is not time-sensitive, we have some other items, can we further this discussion another time? I hate to cut off.
Absolutely.
The council members, but you could send them questions if you come up with something, but we've got to get through this.
Proceedually, we have an obligation to formally present to you the Planning Commission's recommendation. I think we're shooting for the.
21st.
The second meeting in August to do that. So we'd be happy to stay on that schedule. The, the council's conversation could take place at that point if you want to send us away and have us do some additional work for you after we've formally presented you that recommendation, that would work just great.
All right, thank you. I think we need to move on, time is getting late.
We're certainly happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Truck replacement?
Okay. Okay. So there's zero.
Thank you for waiting around, this place.
So I'm going to let Sandra handle this.
Okay.
I have some slide things, but they're really small, so you're probably not going to want them anyways. The charts get a little tiny.
Could this be sent to us in a packet by email?
Yes, tomorrow.
Thank you, that would really help. Thank you.
Tomorrow would be fantastic.
Okay. Thank you for your time, Mayor Protemp and city council members. We have vehicle and equipment replacements right now. These are three of the last five we have to do for the year. I highlighted in yellow the ones that we're talking about today and if you remember from my last presentation, the darker blue was, it was carryover from last year. So these are actually ones that were not ready last year, criteria-wise. They are now ready this year. So that's what that chart shows. The next slide is just reminding you that we have a bunch of purchasing tools that we're going to utilize. Today on these three purchases, there, we're actually using three different tools to do these. The first one, you'll remember back in March, you actually approved the purchase of this truck and not to exceed $10,000 for this stake bed body that's going to be used by the solid waste department. In the five months from the time we bought the truck to now where we're actually going to contract with the body builder, some specialty items came up that made it a little bit more safer and, and more efficient, such as in your agenda bill that I have already given you, some aluminum sides versus steel sides, a staircase that's going to step out so they can step up into the vehicle better, a cab guard so if they throw a roll cart, it doesn't smash the back window, which we have happened, that happens quite often, and reinforcement of the, the floor. We also had proposed truck stacking, but after going through this process, both vendors are now suggesting we do not do truck stacking because it bows, so we're back to the steel with a coating on top of it. So you'll see that difference in your packet. What does this do for us? As far as when we first did up the agenda bill last week even, another vendor came out of the woodworks and they have since decreased it by $3,600. And that vendor actually is a state contract vendor and so we're going to build it through the state contract because our trucks have not arrived, they arrive in August, end of August. So we have time, if it's approved, to put it on to the purchase and then when it comes to the city, it will be a turnkey product. We won't have to take it to someone else, waste more time, it's going to come all already together for us if it's approved. And we're actually using state contract pricing on that particular purchase. This next slide just shows you that I, the budget and amount, the funds available, we've already allocated the $28,000. We're asking for an additional $10,000 or we've already asked for the $10,000 and we need an, an additional $5,400 for those specialty items that we feel will make it safer for our operators and, and more efficient. And it's still within the funds amount that we have set aside in the replacement fund. So that's the first replacement that you'll be seeing on this next, the city council agenda. Number 82 is one that you haven't seen yet. This is the one that's been a work in progress because we're taking this existing four-by-four truck and making it into a service body truck, using the existing crane, putting it on to this new truck. In this particular acquisition, we're going to be using the city of Seattle's contract pricing, so we're going to piggyback off of them instead of using the state contract pricing. That actually came in higher than the city of Seattle one this time around. So we're proposing to utilize that and these are just the questions that we ask every time, we went over this at the last workshop. There's a criteria, it's not just about age or miles, it's about the repair history of it. Is it serviceable? Is it reliable still? And then also we ask ourselves, is there another item in the fleet that can be used? Can we share? Can we do a, a multi-purpose vehicle? And then we, another chart again, and it just shows the, the truck amount, the body amount, we split those out just so you can see how that kind of pans out and that we're going to request $55,000, not to exceed $55,000. Funds are available in the equipment rental replacement program. All the operators have been involved in this process in designing that service body. It's going to allow them to not have to come into the shop, they can stay out in the shop, they'll have all their parts in all of those toolboxes and drawers and, and doors and everything, everything's going to be in there. So it's going to be more efficient to be able to work on lift stations or any other wastewater collection storm drain jobs that they're working on. The third acquisition that we're going to be bringing forward, we've hit a hiccup this year, this, this week because all the demos did not come in. We have one more demo coming in this week and another one coming in in two weeks. So what we're going to, we're going to be pushing this actually off till September, but we'll just address it right now in this workshop. What we've put in your agenda packet is the top of the, the most expensive tractor that could possibly be used. These other two coming in are not as expensive and we're hoping that they're going to fit our needs because this one is kind of big when we brought it on site. This tractor needs to be really low profile, it needs to have a tight turning radius because our operators are literally on the side of the shoulders sideways. So we don't want them to tip, we want them to be able to be as close to the ground as possible and, and once again, we did all of our questions, our criteria, that will all be included in your agenda packet so you can see. And what we're using, the purchasing tool on this one is kind of cool, it's, the tractors are done with a catalog discount. So what the state does is they get a whole bunch of vendors, they say, give me your best prices for these categories of, you know, up to a certain horsepower and they make categories and they take a discount. So this particular one is 28% off the manufacturer pricing. And so that's how it's come in so low and it's, it's not just on the equipment, it's also on any accessories. This particular equipment will need a flail attachment, so it will be on that as well. And this just kind of shows you that's what category we're in. Those are all the vendors that have submitted into the state and all of the pricing discounts that they've offered. So we're demoing as many as those as we can to be able to see which one is going to fit the needs for this specialty tractor that needs to be low-profile, a flail mower, tight turning radius. And again, another chart just shows that we budgeted $100,000, the funds available are $128,000. This, the highest top-of-the-line tractor is only coming in at 59, so we're definitely not going over 59. So this one's been a great replacement, as far as pricing is concerned. I just wanted to throw this in there, Kathy, talked to you about this at the, another workshop that we have now been mandated by this new RCW that all of our replacements have to be 100% electric and/or 100% biodiesel driven. That is not feasible, but we still have to show our due diligence. So what we're going to end up doing in all of our agenda bills is put in a statement saying, we've looked at this, we've determined that's not feasible at this time, you know, and, and just take it by a one-by, one-on-one case basis. And this was the coolest slide that I put in, that I thought was really cool was because the state only offers a F-150, we're talking about an F-350 truck here, the one that we actually need. So they don't even offer what we need, number one, but we're being mandated to try to do this. And if we were to just settle for our F-150, the price, the base price alone is $50,000 and the truck that we want is $29,000. It's almost double the cost to go 100% electric. It's just, we just can't do it. There's other options out there, of course, natural gas, propane, things like that. It's not just about buying the vehicle, you start talking about your mechanic shop has to be adjusted, your filling island has to be adjusted, there's quite a few things that come into it and that's a long-term discussion. But that was an interesting slide to show you that we've, we've, we've looked, it just, we just can't do it. So you'll be seeing that in every agenda bill that comes past you about replacement, just so we cover our basis and we can show that to the auditors when they ask us if we've done our due diligence.
You're right, excellent slide.
Yeah.
All right, are there any questions at this time about replacement vehicles? Yes, Councilman Larson?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I've enjoyed the presentation that you've given us, and you're so thorough. You are looking out for the bottom line, saving money. I thought that this was a misprint when I was looking at the 2018 New Holland tractor and it said budgeted amount $100,000 and you came in at 59.5. And so it just excites me to save that kind of money. So thank you very much for your due diligence.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Thank you very much and we are adjourned. Thank you, Seth Colley, we really appreciate it, really appreciate it. Welcome.